Good afternoon. This is the June 8th, 2021 regular meeting of the Pinehurst Village Council. Welcome everybody here. To my left and your right is Councilwoman Jane Hoagman, then Judy Davis, myself, and Lydia Bosch to my right, your left, Jeff Sanborn, village manager. Kevin Drum is participating via Zoom tonight, and we can see him on the screen. I think you may be able to as well. And we welcome you all here. We have both a regular meeting and a work session tonight with a number of key items facing the village for a discussion and ultimate decision in the next weeks and days and hours. And so we welcome your attendance tonight. The first order of business after calling the meeting to order will be reports, and we'll start with the village manager. Jeff, what would you like us to know today?
Thank you, John. I don't have anything to report on this time.
All right. Starting with council members then. Lydia, would you like to go ahead? And I'll take-
John, I also don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
All right. Judy?
I think that I was at a bridal shower over the weekend for our golf pro at Pinehurst who's engaged to the golf pro at CCNC. And all the people in that room were just talking about how the village has got its vibe back and that they're all excited about the new shops that are coming in and things that are happening. So I think that was really great to hear a lot of unsolicited accolades. That's it.
Jane?
Well, to follow up on what Judy said, the Pinehurst Business Partners has launched open late till eight on the fourth Thursday of the month during the summer. So that will start with June 24th. And many of the shops in Pinehurst will be open late for shopping and just to enjoy being out.
That's a nice development that they're doing, and I'm sure they can be successful at that. Thanks for mentioning that, Jane. Kevin Drum, go ahead, please. Kevin, do you have any reports? Are you on mute possibly?
I'm sorry, John. Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Just briefly, Partners in Progress, Natalie taking its reins. You guys are not surprised. She's already discussed, you know, measurables, deliverables, how to do a better job of connecting to the communities and working for the communities. I think we're all familiar with this format from Natalie, but it was nice to see it presented at our first official meeting. And I think I'm pretty excited about the change that is occurring. And John attended with me. It seems like they've recognized what they weren't doing and they want to fix it. And that's always the first step. And that concludes my own report.
Kevin, thanks very much. I did participate in that call this morning as well. And I think one of the key elements, as Kevin mentioned, was that Natalie has the idea that different kinds of coordination with different parts of the county, different municipalities in the county, needs to be taken into consideration, perhaps a bit more than it had been in the past. And that's a direction she wants to take Partners in Progress because it is a more county organization. And that will mean probably more interaction with each of the municipalities as to what they want to do, what they need, what their development issues are. And I think that's all good. So, and also, as Kevin said, the discipline and the reporting and the achievement measurement, which Natalie and village government is known for here, will, I think, become a very active part of Partners in Progress into the future. From my own reports of activities over the past couple of weeks, I would highlight especially the Sand Hills Motoring Club Festival, which was here over Memorial Day weekend. The Sunday event in the village was particularly well-attended, both in terms of cars. They had over 140 or 50 cars of different vintages, different types, different classes. I was asked to make the mayor's award to a particular car, which was a very unique 1920s Italian vehicle that I think only 200 of were ever produced in the world. And we had two of them here at that motoring festival. It's a nice event for the village. I think it fits us, and I appreciate the help that the Parks and Recreation Department has done in putting that together. And I think we need to plan very carefully with them into the future and how we can be effective with them there. But it's a great event. The next item of business will be the consent agenda. These are items that have been submitted to the council before, minutes of meetings, other reports. Any council member have an item in the consent agenda you wish to pull out for further discussion?
May I make just one comment?
Yes.
Not to pull it out, but just I want to thank our police chief for staying on top of trends, paying attention to trends, looking into trends, keeping us informed and doing, using all of our resources to keep Pinehurst a very, very safe place.
Yep. Thanks to the police. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor? Is there a motion though, please, Judy?
I move to approve all the items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
A motion by Judy Davis to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number four, which means that the gentleman who just entered the room, Mr. Joel Schreiber, can remain standing as he finds a place to sit with his wife. I would just like to make the following introductory comments. We have two awards and recognitions, really, to handle in the next few minutes. The first one is a thank you resolution from the village council to Mr. Joel Schreiber for his service on the planning and zoning board for several years. Joel was an integral part of the board over these years, and we really appreciated his diligence and the dignity that he brought to that board. And I have a resolution, Joel, which I'm going to present to you. Could you meet me at the microphone, please? Want to make sure we all can hear this, Joel. Thank you for being with us today. The village council has prepared this following resolution. A resolution honoring Mr. Joel Schreiber to the Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustment, whereas the village council of Pinehurst, North Carolina, wishes to acknowledge and express its appreciation to Mr. Joel Schreiber for his dedicated service to the citizens of Pinehurst as a member of the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Board. And whereas Mr. Schreiber was first appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board on January 25th, 2011, and as a member of the Board of Adjustment on March 13th, 2012, and served until January 30th, 2017. And whereas Mr. Schreiber was reappointed to the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Board on February 1st, 2018, and served until January 31st, 2021. And whereas Mr. Schreiber was instrumental in the efficient operation of the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Board, always conducting the village's business in a courteous, professional manner. And whereas Mr. Schreiber has been a significant contributor to a number of subcommittees and study groups, always utilizing his analytical skills and his past experiences to create better outcomes for the community and gaining a broad consensus. And whereas Mr. Schreiber was involved in numerous reviews of significant development projects in Pinehurst and its extraterritorial jurisdiction, in which he always ensured that the Planning and Zoning Board fully examined all of the aspects of the proposed development or land use requests before providing his recommendation to the village council. And whereas Mr. Schreiber's presence always added a sense of dignity to the board's proceedings, now therefore, be it resolved by the village council of Pinehurst, North Carolina, in a regular meeting assembled this 23rd day of February, 2021, as follows. Section one, that the village council hereby expresses on behalf of the citizens of Pinehurst deep appreciation and gratitude for the gifts of time, ability, determination, given as a member of the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Board. And section two, that the village manager is hereby directed to have a copy of this resolution presented to Mr. Schreiber as a token of our gratitude. Joel, this is for you. You note that the approval date was February. And we all know what was going on still in February this year. So as you know, because we talked about it, it took a little while to get here in the presence of others who want to thank you for your service to the village. We know that will continue. And I would acknowledge too, your wonderful service with First Health and the foundation over many years. Thank you very much for your time. If you'd like to say something.
At my last planning and zoning meeting, I made the comment that I thought it was a responsibility of all the members of Planning and Zoning and the Board of Appeals to do their homework ahead of time and be prepared for the meeting, to listen to the applicant, and especially to listen to the people in the audience, and remember how the request of the applicant affected the neighbors, his or her neighbors, and then to try and find a way that met a middle of the road and compromise the agreement as long as it didn't, as long as it adhered to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. And if I did that most of the time or half the time, I'm very pleased. And I certainly hope that the people who appeared before us felt that we did. Thank you. Miss you with all of the things you used to say. Thank you so much. You have-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Joel.
The next item of business is a presentation by our village manager. Jeff?
Hey, John. This is, as it turns out, a great opportunity to think about and recognize the volunteers in our community. Like Joel, we, the Village of Pinehurst, is really blessed with just a whole host of highly qualified, energetic, engaged folks that want to help us be the best community that we can be. And, you know, I really just can't say enough about what they contribute to what we do to serve the Village of Pinehurst across the board. Hundreds of volunteers. One of the things that we do on an annual basis to recognize some of the, you know, the volunteers that really excel is this thing called the Champions Club. And it parallels an award program that we have for our paid employees as well. But what we do is we ask from across the board, staff, other volunteers, council members, anybody else who wants to make a recommendation or nomination, to bring forth nominations of the volunteers that they see really, you know, performing at a high level for our community. And then we pull together a panel to review those applications or those nominations. And we assess the nominated candidates based on our core values: service, initiative, teamwork, and improvement. What we typically do is we take the opportunity afforded by our annual volunteer appreciation luncheon to recognize the folks that were nominated and the overall winner. Because of the COVID environment, we haven't had the opportunity to do that for the last two years. And so this will be the second year where we've done this as part of a council meeting instead. It works out okay. I sure hope we can get back next year to, you know, the standard operations where we can do that volunteer luncheon. Probably could do it right now. If, you know, if we'd known, we know now about the operating situation a couple of months ago, maybe we would have delayed that. But here we are tonight. And we had three exceptional nominations again this year. And what I want to do is I'm going to recognize all three of those folks. We fortunate to have, fortunate to have two of them here with us tonight. But I want to read an excerpt from the nominations for all three. The first is Janet Farrell. Janet has served as a member of the Beautification Committee since last July. She took the initiative immediately after joining the Beautification Committee to accept a leadership position as the backup chair. Janet also led the charge on the major project of stringing of the 102 Christmas wreaths with over 200 strands of lights. She coordinated all the volunteers that worked tirelessly over several weeks on the project. And without question, she put in more hours than anyone else stringing the lights. Thank you, Janet, for all you do to serve the Village of Pinehurst. The second is Nancy Donahue. Nancy is a volunteer at the Welcome Center. She was nominated for consistently going above and beyond this year as a Welcome Center volunteer. She covered 78 shifts, which represents 33% of all available shifts. Nancy was described as paying great attention to detail and selflessly helping whenever something needs fixing. And she provides valuable input to the staff and is helpful to our visitors. Thank you, Nancy, for all that you do to serve the Village of Pinehurst. The third nominee, who I don't think made it here tonight, is Susan Strine. Susan has served as a member of the Greenway Wildlife Habitat Committee for many years. She has remained dedicated to preserving and furthering the mission of the committee. Susan led the way this past year in getting the Greenway Wildlife Habitat Committee Pollinator Habitat Garden recognized by the North Carolina State University as a design example that is included in the NC State Extension Garden Plant Toolbox Design Gallery on the NCSU website. That was a mouthful. Thank you, Susan, for all that you do to serve the Village of Pinehurst. As I said, we had really, we really had three bang-up nominations this year, and they really are representative of what's going on across the village in our volunteer community to help us be the best community that we can be. You know, at the end of the day, as is always the case, we can only choose one. But, you know, I sure wish we could give three. Because like I said, we had, we had three really high-quality candidates. But after the evaluation, the panel selected Nancy Donahue as this year's winner of our Volunteer Champions. Present to you, Nancy.
Congratulations, Nancy. I hope you keep up the good work. And thanks to Jill Luzzuski, who's here and is the manager of the Welcome Center. It's, you've done a great job. And we all appreciate the fact that you have more opening hours now and are meeting the needs of individuals as they come to visit our town. Thank you very much to you, Jill, as well. Moving along then, we'll go to item, agenda item number six, which is continuation of discussions under ordinance, proposed ordinance 2107. I want to preface my remarks tonight, and Dick and Bob, if you wish to approach the table, please do. Just so that the people who are listening to this meeting and those of you here in the hall understand, this particular project, as you all are well aware, is a major project in the history of Pinehurst. And the management team and development team from the resort, members of the village staff, members of the village council, have been having continuing discussions over the last three weeks, three sessions, actually, on this particular subject. And what we're trying to do is to come to an agreement about certain conditions that will apply to this application. But please know that the timeframe between each of the meetings, which we started back in May, I have found busy days and busy weeks in between the formal council meetings. There's a lot of work, in other words, going on by the management team for the resort, by members of the village council, and certainly from the village staff. So whereas some of the things that will be talked about tonight will be new to us as to you who are listening, we also have had ongoing discussions to try to point all of ourselves in the right direction for the last, the last several weeks, and I think very successfully so. So tonight, the management team is going to talk to us about certain changes and ideas they've had since the last meeting. We're also going to hear comments as a part of this agenda item six from members of the Women's Exchange, who approached the council about 10 days ago to make some comments to the discussion that have not been made before. So there are new information to us that the Exchange wanted to have. And we've decided to include that in this agenda item number six. So after a presentation by the management team, we'll hear some comments from the Women's Exchange for consideration. And then we'll get into a discussion with the council and the management team, development team here tonight for everyone's benefit. So with that, Dick or Bob, I'm happy to turn the microphones over to you. And you can please update us on developments since the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My name is Richard Higginbotham. I'm CFO for the applicant Pinehurst LLC. And Kelly informs me that one more meeting, I'll qualify for a nameplate right here. So get my favorite clicker here. Since its initial development in 1898, the Pinehurst clubhouse has undergone at least 15 major expansions, excluding those interior projects designed to improve operations. This average is a major renovation every eight years or so. The last, depending on how you define scope, was 2013 to 2014 with the renovation of the Country Club and the major changes to the East Veranda. The next project to be completed is the new Pro Shop expansion. Although this may not really register as much of an expansion based on size, since it's less than 1,000 square feet, it will boost USGA Championship operations through the sale of championship merchandise and through support of the USGA hospitality initiatives. Now, let's be honest. Some of these past projects have been more architecturally pleasing, 1922 clubhouse, than others. 1952 golf shop. Now, to the staff, I will point out that with this type of landscaping plan, it'd be a lot easier to enforce guidelines. Some projects have turned the building outside in. Now, for those who don't know where this is, this is actually a storeroom in our Country Club kitchen, which was at one point an exterior wall with the very popular features of the Spanish Mission that was covered up in the 1971 renovation. And some of the projects were immersively taken down. Last remnants of Diamond Head. Let's go back. However, all have contributed to make the facility, our campus, and our heritage one of the icons of American golf. We cannot maintain that status by standing still. So now it's time to turn our focus on the future and the reason we are here today, our request for conditional district zoning for the lodge at Pinehurst. This is the next major expansion planned in conjunction with the USGA and designed to solidify our position as a premier site for championship golf. There are three major issues I would like to wrap up tonight. And we hope you will entertain a vote on conditional zoning, on the conditional zoning being requested. One, parking. Two, architectural renderings. And three, listing of final conditions. First and foremost, parking. There have been a lot of discussions on every phase of parking, especially future parking. But there remains confusion on the hard numbers, when I called in the last meeting reversing the math. Here is how we believe we need to look at parking on the club campus. Little hard to see, and maybe we should have had a copy. Can I have your pointer? Green button, okay.
I can't see that unless it's enlarged.
Someone else is probably going to need to enlarge it. I don't, can we enlarge it? I don't think we can. All right. Bob will try to do that while we talk. Oh, there it goes. Okay, can we slide it over just a touch? Because we really need to see the table more than the-
Yeah, we need that upper-left corner, I think.
Yeah, the other way. A little bit more. Okay. So as we're looking at this table, what we've basically done is identified, we put the parking into several sections. The first section is what we will call the negatives. Okay? The negatives, those are factors negatively impacting existing parking levels. These would include the added demand from the lodge, the 12 net spaces lost due to construction, the 12 spaces from the development of Golf House Pinehurst, and the lost shuttle parking. As shown here, these total 167 spaces. I think all these numbers have been discussed previously. The second section is what we will call the positive factors impacting parking. Again, these would include changes in demand that are favorable to defining parking requirements, like lost tennis courts and lost demand from shuttle drivers, since in the one above, shuttles go away. Obviously, this would also include parking added in our design presentations and/or as defined in the zoning conditions we'll present here in a little while. These total 178 spaces, or 11 more than those being lost without consideration of greenhouse parking. And again, that is right here. And again, I don't think any of these numbers are overly surprising. The 18 is per the PDO. 125 is the number we agreed to at the last meeting. The lost demand for shuttle drivers is, you can kind of pick your number. Obviously, since we have 32 shuttles, it could be as high as 32. We're taking a more conservative number at 15. And then we have shared spaces with the USGA. At the greenhouse level, which is the next level down, right here, we are easily able to support relocation of the shuttle fleet and related drivers and still have flexible spaces for other uses. In short, after accounting for the lodge here and the USGA operations, our plan, as outlined at this point right here, adds 14% more net vehicle parking on the main club campus than existed previously. Now, let me be clear. After we account for PDO requirements for the new structures, we have effectively added 14% more full-size parking. As it says on the slide here, it's actually 60% more than PDO requirements. This does not take into account golf cart parking or other alternative forms of parking allowed under the PDO. Now, some will argue about the efficiency of the greenhouse spaces, these spaces right here, whether they have any real value. However, if you change the math and simply use 60, which is the amount of shuttles and shuttle drivers, or you change the math and simply use the greenhouse lot to account for the shuttle and shuttle relocations, we are still more than, or just short of 10% ahead of existing parking. In other words, if we change this number to 60, we are still almost 10%. The exact number is 9.27% ahead of existing parking.
Could we go over that again?
Sure. If you were to take this out and just assume that, because right now we're showing 100. So if you were to change that 100, take it down to 60, which is the number of shuttles that are being relocated and the maximum number of shuttle drivers that are being relocated. So if you change that number to 60 and did the math, we would still be 10% ahead of existing parking. And this number, 66 beyond PDO requirements, would become 45% ahead of PDO requirements. In other words, all we're saying here is if you don't want to accept the fact that those additional 40 spaces have any value in your calculations, we've taken them out. And we're still well ahead.
Can you go over again the 14% and the 66%? I don't understand that.
Sure. Actually, I have my little footnotes here with the math already outlined. The 14% is basically if you take the 111 spaces that are outlined right here and divide by the 771 existing parking spaces, and we're only talking full-size parking spaces here. We're not talking about carts or anything else. It's full-size parking spaces on the campus. That is the math that's 14%. campus, that is the math, it's 14%. If you were to change this number, as we said, and make that 60, the math works out to be, it's an algebraic equation, but it basically says 111 minus 40 divided by 771 In addition to these numbers, can we slide it up a little bit or down, I guess is the case may be, so we can see lower on the table? Perfect, thank you.
Then unenlarge it too for me, which I can't see a lot. Thank you.
Well, it's probably better for everybody if it stays a little bit larger anyway. I'm sure the audience would enjoy seeing it as well.
Is that better, Kevin? You're muted, Kevin, so I just will make sure that's okay with you.
A wider view.
A wider view?
Yeah.
Well, we're all, it's all in a very focused, upper-left-hand corner right now, so...
Whatever is best for the public, then.
Okay. Go ahead, Dick.
Okay. In addition, consistent with our commitment as part of the USGA-Pinehurst incentive agreement, we are adding up to 126 spaces on the hotel campus, with a minimum commitment of 86 new spaces, provided, of course, the Village Code does not stop us. Adding in the Carolina spaces to the club calculation, and the total gain on the two campuses is 197 spaces without consideration of Barrett Road. And basically, what we have is the math right here. If you take 111 plus the 86, that's 197. The 86 does not include Barrett Road. The 86 is focused on the three sites we've discussed previously, the employee lot behind the hotel, the pool lot, and the front east lot, plus three spaces in the front west Barrett Road is not being included, as we've discussed before, because those 40 spaces would require additional code changes, or additional code review, we'll say, and so we're not willing to commit to them yet. As Tom Patchley, President of Pinehurst Resort and Country Club, has stated in previous meetings, it is not in our best interest to not have enough parking to address long-term business. We believe this plan, the 197 spaces added, accomplishes Tom's statement and indicates the council and the residents a willingness to listen to your requests. Architecture. I let the first rendering out of the bag early. Here are the other renderings as promised. Now, we do have copies. Bob, you want?
Putting them up on the screen now?
Yep. I have dual remotes. I have to remember I have dual remotes. It's not gonna, maybe this, it's not gonna let me advance, I don't think, until we shrink.
Fine.
Back to that one. What we have is, we're gonna present three renderings. The first one you saw, the first one, I will go back to, whoops. The first one is the twilight view from the west, I'm sorry, so from the east looking west. This is sort of the marketing shot. As defined, this is what we consider our, kind of our St. Andrews shot. If you look at images of St. Andrews, you will normally see that the building only occupies about half the picture. The rest of the picture is some portion of the golf course or of green, as you see here. To give you some idea of the preciseness of these, I will point out that the lady right here has a knee brace on and is actual, is an actual resident of Pinehurst and gave us permission to use her in this image. So I assure she will be thrilled that they are in there. But these are actually from images that were taken by the artist. Whoops, too far. This one is obviously the Highway 5 shot, not quite as far over. You can see, obviously, this is taken with the lodge being the predominant part of the picture. It is obviously got the gray roof, which is what is approved by historical, and gives us a pretty good presence of what it can look like from the cart path or basically from the railroad tracks, depending on how you're looking at it. The next image is the one that I think is a little bit different. I will highlight a couple things in here. This is obviously looking from Don Pageant Learning Center or somewhere just to the south of that, looking sort of to the northeast, where you can capture both the, obviously, the clubhouse and the lodge, which is obviously in the background at this particular point in time. There has been a lot of concerns about spacing, and in this particular image, we begin to see the spacing between the two buildings. And a lot of concern, obviously, with massing, only be, and part of that concern with massing is obviously if you're always looking at it from this angle, then the lodge is always in the foregrounds. And so if you begin to look at it in the other way, it becomes in the background. We really do like this image. We believe it shows you the activity and some of the scale of the building.
Dick, we'll get into this a little later too, but as you're going through, are there any changes to the architecture on the south side of the building that have been made from what we earlier have seen?
No.
No. So these images tonight are meant, as you explained to us at the last meeting, to kind of give us a view from different angles and different times of day of the building.
Right. Right. To be clear, Pinehurst was always comfortable, going back to what you, your question, was always comfortable with the design, the scale, and the mass. The design and materials were approved by the HPC. We believe we have hired an incredibly talented professional team to help us with all phases of the project, and we believe they have developed a project that aligns with the site, and even without the players, the players dining space addresses the USGA championship mission. We believe these renderings only confirm our position. We will not please 100% of the membership, or 100% of the Village residents, or 100% of my own employees with this design. And to be clear, that fact exists no matter what the design of the building is. What we have learned over time is to depend on the experts, the ones who do historical renovations across the world. We also understand that the building is still evolving. The changes made to the USGA spaces will require us to visit the HPC in the coming months to discuss these changes and any other required change as work, as we work through final design, construction drawings. Final conditions. We've included final conditions version four in this proposal. Wrong one. There we go. This is consistent with the last version, except we have added a condition committing to the 25-year stormwater management asked for by council. We believe that this condition list is fair and consistent with the comments we have heard, speaking of what, oh, and speaking of what we've heard, Jeff, and noting that we clearly heard that envelopes matter, we have a little something for all of you, which Jeff will, has on his desk to be handed out, and we hope you'll enjoy the reading. So we've heard that envelopes are important too, from our last meeting. Yeah, you can hand them out. It's simply a book on the Village, on the clubhouse at Pinehurst, so...
There's nothing in here that affects your application, I think.
No, I know, there is nothing, no. I didn't even sign it, because I didn't even, I didn't want to have, say I signed something for you. So, basically, as we look at the list of final conditions, this is the same as we had discussed before, in that the yellow highlights are, oops, I had the right one in the first place. The yellow highlights are changes that we have made from the original submission from P&amp;Z. So wherever you see a yellow highlight, we have changed that request and made an addition. And if we go to page two, we can see that the last one, number 11, which is the last one added, is all stormwater will be designed to accommodate 25-year storm events.
Now, I'm just gonna add this to my copy from last time, but you have new copies, if we would like them, of this at some point, Bob, that's okay.
Okay.
So point, condition number 11 is stormwater to be designed to 25-year storm events.
Correct.
Okay.
No other changes are on this one from the one we presented last meeting.
Hey, Dick, back on number four, I, on my version last week, two weeks ago, had put, provide 25 additional, let's go back to number four, number, page before this one.
It's four, yeah.
Go back on the slide so I can see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, slide number four, point number four on page number one. I had inserted, you got provide 125, I had inserted additional right there.
Okay.
Do I also have that in there?
Additional what?
Additional. The word additional after 125.
Yeah, that's just to help you with communication, Dick.
And, um, number five, the bottom line, I had provide plans, that's a small one, but, so that line would read approval and construction to be began prior to year in 2024, provided plans, pure plural.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's a tiny one.
Provide plans.
Approved, yeah. Plans are approved by, yeah.
Providing plans are approved by.
Can we repeat that, Lydia?
Um, point number five, bottom line, excuse me, the word plans should be plural, plans? Provide plans, provide plans are approved, or provided plans are approved.
It's a verb tense in the plural of plans, right?
Or approved. Provided plans are approved by Village in a timely manner.
Okay, so those are the changes to the conditions proposed today from the resort. Okay. And as I'm thinking about these renderings, Bob, did you have a copy for Councilman Drum? I think you said he had four, but I'm happy to share mine with Kevin and get them to him initially.
We'll send him one. We can send it, we can send it a PDF, that would...
That would be fine.
That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, I think, Kevin, we all appreciate the...
They were, yeah, they were actually done. I mean, that was, some of them at his request, so...
That's exactly right. So I want to make sure Kevin would have that. All right.
And just while we're on it...
Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, on the, on the renderings, you know, we were unsure, some had red, some had gray with some green roofs. It looks like, I thought that was gonna be used to break up the scale, the green roofs on the spiral. Now you have just gray roofs throughout, is that correct?
We just have gray roofs and the green awnings, which was approved by HPC.
On one design, you had green roofs on a couple structures, and those, that's no longer the case.
No.
Right?
No.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Um, we've had this discussion before. I continue to think that the green roofs are more a factor of printing them than anything else. At no point in time did we consciously have a green roof. We only had awnings that were green, and whether that transmitted or not remained to be seen.
I was trying to understand the decision, but yes, you're saying it was an accident, that some of those two sections were green?
Yes.
Okay.
I think if you go back to the last rendering, the one in front of Thistle Dew and Putting, yeah, there.
That one?
Yeah. So there you see the green awnings pretty clearly with the gray roof.
Right, and you can see the green awnings right through here.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, one drawing, and the sycuits, I'm sure you'll confirm it, you had on the circular a green roof and somewhere down the left end a green roof.
Yeah, I think that was on the plan view rendering.
Yeah, plan view last meeting, last meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I'm not trying to confuse them with awnings, but just...
The other point I will point out, it's not as clear here, but the gray roof here and the gray roof here, as discussed, this is shingle and this is metal standing seam.
Okay. I think we'll have time to come back to some of those architectural questions, and I appreciate you've organized your comments so far, Dick, into parking, architecture, and then the stormwater comment that you've added to the conditions. I'd like to go back, if we could, please, to the parking discussion, and have you draw up that one chart again, please, the one you submitted last night. Yeah. Now, in the upper-left-hand corner there, which all the, where all the statistics are, tell me, and this will lead to some comments, I think, that we've agreed to have from the Women's Exchange, tell me what the plans are for the tennis facility area at this time.
There have been no changes from what we've discussed before. That decision is still outstanding. As we've said before, what we've shown to the council is nothing but proof of concept, which basically is saying, we can prove that we can put the required number of spaces in that location if necessary, and that's all this is. So that's all that is really showing, and Adam is happy, our parking guy is happy to come up and confirm that. But there is no decision on whether we're going with surface parking or parking deck at this time.
Okay. And with respect to the tennis courts on the east side, they're in blue at the upper-right hand of the map, how many spaces would go into that site if you did that at all?
Well, I think... This shows 125, is that correct? That shows 125. Whether 125 would be required would be somewhat subject to number six, right?
Right. So the 125 would be the number of cars parked on what now are the entirety of the tennis courts...
That would be the maximum.
To the maximum, to the east of Carolina Vista and surrounding the house. And what would happen to the tennis house, just theoretically?
It would be reused for something.
Reused for something else. All right. With counsel, Dick, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Kelly, could you zoom in on that, please, on the rendering? Where those tennis courts were up there? What's the verbiage say on it?
Yeah.
Well, I thought there was a number on that.
Yeah, I knew there was a number, but I wasn't sure it was on the blue or in the other part.
That strikes me as a lot more than 125. He said at least, it was his number, but he said at least 125. Yeah. And again, I want to stress, all we're trying to do here is proof of concept, and as we talk about turns, you know, the interesting thing is, is the tennis courts that reside here, which are shaded out, but on the original drawings, they still exist, have not been touched, per se. I mean, they would not be still there. We would not just have those two tennis courts or those limited tennis courts there, but...
Okay. With council permission, then, what I'd like to do now is to have the representatives of the Women's Exchange, who have come to present some new information, some new concerns on their part, which we really haven't heard before, except by email, to present now. And Dick, Bob, maybe you want to seat over back where you were, and I would invite, I think it's Barbara Summers and Marie Carberry, to approach either the table or the pedestal and make the comments that you would like the council and the applicant to know. And as you're seated, would you make sure the microphone is close and state your name and your address in Pinehurst, please?
I'm Barbara Summers, and I live at 180 Lake Hills Road in Pinehurst.
Marie Carberry, 1 Travis Lane, Pinehurst.
And you respectively represent the Women's Exchange in what capacities?
I am the president of the board.
Former president, membership chair right now.
Thank you very much. Please proceed with your comments.
If the Pinehurst Village Council is considering approval of a parking garage for the resort where tennis courts number three through six are located behind the cabin, that we feel it will increase flooding at the cabin home to the Sand Hills Women's Exchange. Steps must be taken to prevent future flooding problems. We are aware that the location of the cabin is at a low point, but we have experienced more flooding issues since the pool complex and the holding ponds were installed. There had not been any flooding before 2006. The 2016 weather event caused the most damage to the cabin and resulted in a $59,000 claim against our flood insurance.
against our flood insurance and the loss of revenue for over six weeks. With this in mind, we are asking that before you approve a parking garage, please do a topographical and water flow survey of the area, assessing the water flow for the two holding ponds owned by the village and the resort, along with the 18-inch concrete pipe that is the outlet structure for that area and empties over to Route 5. We believe they do not have the capacity to handle storm water flow during extreme weather events. We would be glad to provide a copy of the structural inspection done by Neil Smith Engineering dated June 13, 2018. Their report documents the problems. If the parking garage is built or the courts remain, we still have an issue with runoff and flooding impact. It should be noted here that a part of the tennis courts is built on cabin property. Our 1810 cabin is not only a part of the Pinehurst National Register Historic District, but also falls under the protective covenants of the Historic Preservation Foundation of North Carolina and has been entered in the National Register of Historic Places. We are proud of these designations as we are the caretakers of this cherished cabin that has been home to the Sandhills Women's Exchange for nearly 100 years. Please help us maintain the cabin and continue on for another year, 100 years. Barbara Summers, President.
Barbara, thank you very much. I think at one point you may have had a couple of photographs, I'm not sure we're prepared to show those tonight.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I know they were sent by Judy Wiggins and that, and one showed the proximity of the tennis courts to the back edge of our cabin and that, and the other, I think, was just a reinforcement of some of the slide that was shown today with the possibility of the tennis courts being either made possibly of a parking garage or a surfaced parking structure, which concerns us very much. I mean, whenever we have a rain event, one of us is over there with an umbrella and tracking around to see how we're doing.
And it sounds like whether it's going to be a flat parking surface or a multi-tiered, you're going to increase the permeable, impermeable area, and if now they can't handle this pipe that goes down underneath your property and out to five, if it can't handle it now, and again, Neil Smith looked at that, then what's it going to do if you're increasing the surface area in that, right behind us? So we're very, very concerned about not only additional parking, but multi-tiered parking.
As was described just a couple of minutes ago by the applicant, this is only a concept, of course, that they've proposed.
That's correct.
You're reacting to that concept perfectly incorrect, you know, to, you know, to do that, and perhaps the information from Neil Smith, if it hasn't been made available to village staff in the past to do that, or perhaps directly to the applicant as well with respect to this consideration and your concern about the effect of any additional parking that might be on those, on those courts, we could do that. I'll ask, are there any questions from Council members of the representatives from the Women's Exchange at this point? I'm looking over at Jane, and we'll come back to the overall parking issue, but if we have anything specific to the Women's Exchange, this will be the time to do that, and we'll go on.
Is there, is there an 18-inch pipe that empties water out by the?
It collects from the two holding ponds that are there, one is the village and one is the resorts, and it goes to this 18-inch conduit underneath tennis courts, everything of the resorts out and empties out to five.
But is that pipe taking water away from the detention pond?
Away, as the retention ponds fill, it takes it away, but it's under scoped right now.
Under what, Marie?
Under scoped, in other words, it's not big enough for what's handling there today.
Not big enough, under scoped, okay, fine.
The width.
Judy, question?
No.
Lydia?
No, thank you.
Kevin, would you have any questions for the Women's Exchange representatives?
No, I do not, thank you.
All right, fine.
Thanks.
Barbara and Marie, we thank you very much, we have comments who circulate of yours to the Council as well as those photographs, so we appreciate your being here tonight to make this problem known.
Okay, and thank you, and let us know if you do want the Neil Smith report, because we'd be more than happy to.
All right, fine.
Make that available.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll refer that question over to Darren Burke, and we'll discuss that. Now, to carry on the discussion, Bob, Dick, do you want to return then, and you heard the comments, and if you, well, I've just, you, you heard the comments for the first time, I think, from the Women's Exchange, if you wish to comment on that or take that under consideration, that's fine, otherwise we'll get into questions from the Council members.
I will make a comment, but obviously technical questions can go to the people who.
Yeah.
Understand those things a little bit better than the accountant does, but a couple of things we'll say is, number one, we're well aware of the concerns with the Women's Exchange. Going back to your first question, the picture you showed, we showed you on that map was 161 spaces, just FYI, the 161 spaces fit into the impervious surface roughly provided by all the tennis courts there, so technically at 161 spaces, there was a very minimal increase in impervious surface, and at 125, most likely there would be no increase in impervious surface. Now, having said that, that doesn't solve necessarily any problem because the problem exists, so all we're saying is it does not increase impervious surface, which is one of, obviously one of the concerns we heard earlier from some village residents, so we just want to make sure that's clear. As designed at 125, it would not, according to our quick calculations, increase impervious surface compared to the tennis courts. Secondly, tennis courts are, by definition, a lot like the tables you're sitting at, they're designed to be flat. A curved tennis court does nobody much good when you're playing tennis. Parking lots, on the other hand, can be curved and can be curved, and water is easier to direct on a parking lot than it is on a tennis court. The tennis courts are very close to the Women's Exchange, I would give you that, I don't see parking being 41 inches, I think is the number they sent from us, or 41 feet, sorry, I don't see parking necessarily having to be that close as we design it through that space, and I want to stress, all we're doing is talking about conceptual here, we still have two plans, both of which are going to have to be approved at some point in time based on the code that's in place at the time construction approval is given, not necessarily at today's code, so we have to make sure that's clear. Village ordinance would require us to go through all the analysis for that parking that the Women's Exchange has asked for, that would be required by the village to do that project regardless, and we would have to go through and most likely, because of the surface and the way things are going, update some of that equipment, I don't know what they call it, equipment or infrastructure, I guess would be what I would define it as, and that would obviously be have, have to be part of any plan that was finally presented and approved. The only other concerns I had, and if these questions, we'll make sure, there is only one pipe, the temporary holding pond that the village built to the west of the Women's Exchange is simply that, it's holding water, and as I understand it, it simply is allowed to percolate into the soil. There is only one pipe leading water away, and that is the pipe that the resort put in, and I don't know what year that was, I, I think it was actually there before the pool and then upgraded as part of the pool project, but I want to stress, that's speculation on my part. That is major questions, major initial comments I would have relative to that, except for the stress, this is simply one solution, and either solution we go through is going to have to go through some major review at that time, because as much as some people like the idea of a parking deck, others don't like the idea of a parking deck, so whichever way this goes, we're going to have to have additional meetings at the time because we don't know, number one, if the village code's going to stay the same, whether there are going to be other stipulations that are required, et cetera, at that time.
Bob, did you have any comment on that?
I don't.
No, okay. Let me make a couple of orienting thoughts as far as the rest of this discussion goes, and Bob, I recall you have to leave by about 6 o'clock tonight for another meeting, and we understand that, we'll, we'll carry on right now and whatever time we need.
Excellent.
And I, I think the Council does have a number of questions related to parking and the things you've touched on tonight. Sorry?
Bob's picking a comment.
I'm sorry, I have about 10 more minutes before I have to leave.
Oh, I see, you need to be.
I have to be there.
Be there by six, all right, fine.
I apologize.
All right. The orienting, orientation comments I have, I think, are these, we need to take the presentation we've had tonight, on the parking numbers, where it's come from, what's needed, and compare that to calculations that we have made through the staff and on our own, so we need to reconcile that in order to come to what the condition would read and, and how we would write that in final form, so that's one thing we need to do. I think we too, also need to know, I think their Village Council comments about who's going to park where in this scheme of things, you've given us a good direction on that last week, or last meeting, but I think there's some other things that may be in the minds of some of the Council on that. And then finally, we wouldn't be writing it, but the idea of a development agreement has been expressed before that we would potentially enter into with the resort on this, and we need to think about, you know, what generally that's going to cover and how that would work, but it's really getting to the point of the conditions approved and how the parking is going to work and other things related to that, that I think are the focus. I think that's, is that a fair summary from the Council's point of view? There'll be other questions, but I think that's kind of where we need to go tonight, and after this meeting to try to reconcile what those numbers are. So with that in mind, I'll make these comments from myself, and they are issues and ideas I've talked to other Council members about, all the Council members about, and there is some support for that, but in different ways. As we've looked at the site, and as we've talked about different parking issues and different places to have parking across the site with the help of the applicant, I've come to the conclusion, or at least the conclusion at the moment, that anything we can do to protect the surface area of the campus is to our long-term best interest, and when I say our, I include in that not just village government, but the resort and residents. So from, from my point of view, having not delved into all the issues deeply, anytime we can do tiered or deck or carriage house type parking on this site, so long as it's properly landscaped within the site, but also from the surrounding roads, anytime we can do that, I think we're better off. We use less land, that means we have less impervious surface to deal with, it means we have to take down or change fewer trees, and to me, it's a solution that I hope we can find a way with the resort to, to agree on for at least a portion of the parking itself. So that's a little framework where some of my thinking is now on parking and how to accommodate that, realizing that whatever the number is in the end that we agree to, surface parking and tiered parking has got to, got to get to that, got to get to that number somehow. So with that, I would be happy to go and have the Council members address any questions on parking or architecture or anything else that we need to reconcile, so we can begin to move to a decision on this potentially at our next meeting. Lydia, would you have some questions tonight?
Just a comment, I think.
Could I, can I make one comment real first?
Sure.
Could we direct any, could we direct any comments to Bob first?
Yes.
Because the parking guys will be staying here, so, but if there's any site questions, maybe we get those out of the way first.
So do you want to answer parking questions, or you want to answer other ones?
I don't want to answer parking questions.
Okay.
Parking questions will be answered by me or by our parking guy.
What questions would you like to answer?
I, I don't have any, I'm not going to talk about architecture either, but I'm not sure there are any site-related questions that I have at the moment, if there are questions that you have related to the site.
Business on the far end, we don't know what that one end's going to look like that's being re-engineered, wouldn't you agree with that, Bob?
You're talking about the building architecturally?
Yeah, yeah, the Highway 5 end that's being re-engineered, it's the removal of the banquet space.
It would be redesigned, I think most of.
We don't have that, do we?
I think most of those would be internal modifications.
I thought they were external too.
There will be some external.
There'll be some external.
So that's missing, right?
Well, I guess my first comment would be, this is all at your request, the idea that we can design a building on the fly is not exactly a true statement to make, so the idea that we're going to have a building redesigned, I mean, the parts you've seen took five and a half months from start to finish, so the idea that we're going to make changes to this on, all the way through the exterior is probably, I would classify, is not a reasonable, nor would I necessarily think it's a requirement of the conditions, since it, we all recognize it has to go through HPC, and HPC is the one that ultimately has to approve the design at that time.
Yeah, I, I wasn't talking about eternal, I'm sorry.
Right, I'm talking about exterior.
I'd say exterior only, but I just thought that was something, and then just, I'm just, well, you're not talking about architecture, just site, so.
Right.
The only thing I would say is on site, I didn't see a number for the parking that doesn't count, the overflow parking on Pine Straw, it was like XX on your thing, it did not have a number, Dick? I think that's, is that site plan, is it parking, I don't know, but, you know, the stuff that doesn't count, but still people, it's an overflow parking situation, you didn't have that number on your parking plan on that slide, did you?
No, we did not. It is our opinion that parking in Pine Straw kind of is not necessarily something that's easily numbered, it depends on the creativity of the person parking, I think, as to how, how many can fit, it's kind of like saying how many people can park in the front of this building, it depends on how far down the road, I guess they, they want to park off the street, so you're right, we did not include it, I did mean to kind of mark on the site where it is, and again, it is at the, the northeast portion of the intersection of Cherokee and Carolina Vista, just north of those smaller tennis courts, and how far, how many spaces could fit in there, again, depends on how far back people want to park.
Well, Dick, I thought it would be helpful for you, that's why I wanted the number, I understand you don't want to supply it.
Any other questions for Bob, Judy?
Yeah, I think when you put in curb stops in the Pine Straw, that suggests that you have a numerical quantity of spaces that you're going to have there, so when you say overflow parking in Pine Straw, is that with or without curb stops?
Without.
And then, in terms of the site, on the plan, there's, there's an alternative parking deck that's closer to the lodge, and then you, as you talked about the green spot where the tennis courts are, on the, on this map, it says surface, were you also thinking about that as an alternative parking deck location?
No.
No, okay.
The only parking deck location would be on the existing main lot.
Okay.
Anything on the tennis court side would be surface parking.
Okay. You ready for my questions?
We'll come back to.
I stopped Lydia from.
No, no, I just, are you?
All right, any other questions for Bob Kuntz as he's leaving, and otherwise we'll carry on.
Thank you all.
Bob, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, sorry I have to leave.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, now.
Lydia has some questions.
Yeah, I think Lydia, let's go back to you and address any questions you have about anything on the, on the project, parking, architecture, proven where, whatever.
I'm looking at the revised conditions, and I'm trying to reconcile, and it's reconcilable, the public's strong desire for parking and what the conditions require. In condition number five, resort will provide parking required for the lodge facility, and we, you guys have gone from 85 to 125, and to me, you are going beyond satisfying the first sentence in number five by providing us with the graphs that you've provided us. And Dick, you said to us two weeks ago, and I use the word could, and I picked up on the word could, which says you were still assessing what your parking needs are. And Dick, you said to us two weeks ago, and I used the word "could," and I picked up on the word "could," which says you were still assessing what your parking needs are. But the important thing is the development agreement, and John just mentioned it. And we're kind of talking processes here too, and I may be daring on this. This is a request for conditional rezoning. If that's granted, then at some point, before you can get your construction permit, we've got to work out the parking. And my point there is parking will not be decided if and when this request for rezoning is approved, but before you can get your construction permit, that parking is going to have to be more defined than it is right now. Is that...
I think, I think the more defined is a better statement than the first statement, which was it had to be all worked out. Our agreement is that before, Jeff, you're welcome to chime in too, to make sure I say this right, before we can get the permits for construction, we have to have a signs, I call it a letter of intent, you had another name for it, but we have to have...
Term sheet.
A term sheet. We have to have a term sheet that says, here is the general terms upon which we're going to agree to move forward in terms of how it's balanced, what the stipulations are, what happens if Pinehurst doesn't comply, what happens if the village doesn't grant, you know, those types of things. We're going to have to go through all the things that would be, all the bad things, to make sure everything is covered should something negative happen. And those will have to be outlined in terms of a term sheet or whatever definition. We're going to have to come to a final agreement there. And then, I think what the agreement is, is if we're presenting you our final plans before the open, actually, I think we've said on the revised...
I think it's two or three months before the...
Three months before.
Mm-hmm. Three months prior to the open.
I think we also agreed, did we not, to say that we present you something?
Allows review approval. This parking will be designed and planned, submitted to the village of Pinehurst three months prior to the US Open, 2024 US Open. So that before the 2024, I guess I'm trying to see a timeline here. Approval of the rezoning request, letter of intent, at some point, and maybe this is my question, at what point can the public have more confidence? I mean, you've told us what you're going to do with the rez, over the hotel.
Right.
Got that. But at what point will the public have more confidence in the parking that's going to be at the club?
And by confidence, you mean which direction we're going to go?
Like, hmm, however you want to... Well, you've heard their concerns.
Right, I mean, obviously, I think they can have confidence that the 125 is the commitment we're making, and that's something we're going to live up to, and something that's going to be defined in the term sheet, that if we don't live up to it, what the penalties are, however you want to define that. When we're going to decide, the exact choice is going to be somewhat up to the village, somewhat up to us, somewhat up to forces beyond both of our control. But the main things being evaluated are our tennis consultants going through and defining need, defining whether there's a better location for tennis, defining, talking to membership about that potential better location. If tennis gets moved, is that a better location for member parking? I would say yes, is my humble opinion. I think you can do a much better job of creating directed member parking in that location than you can using a parking deck. So those are the type of things we have to go through. How long will that take? Six to eight months? I mean, again, I want to stress, I mean, a lot can change in that time, but six to eight months, we should have a pretty good feel which direction we're going. We are evaluating the pricing, we've received the pricing on the parking deck, which is scary compared to surface parking. What we thought was a factor of maybe 30% is closer to a factor of 55 to 60% more expensive. So that's certainly something to stipulate, and we'd have to fully understand what the code is at the time that we're presenting, because again, we can all talk about it today, but code can change. And so what happens if all of a sudden there's more restrictions in the historical district? What happens if there's a different code? A lot of things could change that will drive that as well.
And then will the numbers that can give the public some confidence be contained in the term sheet or the letter of intent?
I would say so. I would think they would have to be.
I think, I expect that once we have a final plan for approval, in other words, construction drawings, then we will actually be able to do the math that the PDO requires us to do. So we should be able to nail down the numbers then. So to your point, I think what gives the public the most, I don't know if confidence is the right word, but, you know, the greatest amount of understanding of what's going to happen is numbers, location, and type.
Okay.
And I think that's what we need to be focused on, trying to get encoded in that term sheet or letter of intent.
And then that, the term sheet will be executed prior to the issuance of required construction permits. That's a significant point in time.
Correct.
So to have this term sheet executed before then, give some clarity before construction can begin.
Correct. And Jeff is absolutely right, because we still have to make sure that the fines, because again, as we talked about here, if something changes in the program where the lodge increases the number of rooms, or decreases the number of rooms, or if the bar increases in size or decreases in size, there are still changes that could occur within the calculations. So we still have to go through all that. It's the final building that will determine the PDO requirements for parking.
But that's a good point, too. Just because the conditional zoning, if it's granted, isn't an open ticket for you to go do, for the resort. The resort still has some checks and balances with respect to the village. And you mentioned HPC and... Jeff, can you give me some clarity? You're nodding, but, I mean, you know, Dick had mentioned that some other changes might happen, but they still have to come back to the village with some of these as they work through the construction or the further design.
And I think it might be helpful, again, to point out that what we're talking about here isn't something special we're doing with this project. We would never be able to nail down the actual number of parking spots until we see construction drawings. So that's not different. What's different here is the notion of actually carrying out the construction at a later date after the certificate of occupancy is issued.
For the parking.
Correct.
With respect to the parking.
With the parking.
Yes. Which we have, which we...
Right. And I would agree with Jeff and with you wholeheartedly, Lydia, that number one, we still have to come in front and still go through all the normal requirements for building the lodge. Technically, the only thing we're doing here is changing the zoning so we can move forward with it. So the village still gets all their normal review processes and everything else. And as we discussed in number six, if existing facilities requiring parking by the PDO within the subject property are removed, relocated, or increased from or on the subject property, excluding the tennis courts west of the Carolina for the future, the required lodge parking specified in number four will be adjusted up or down. So again, if something changes in the final construction drawings, you can trust that parking will go up or go down based on whatever that requires.
And just to give everybody a frame of reference, when might the construction drawings be finalized?
We are halfway through, oh, I wish I knew, Calvin, we're halfway through design development. So the construction drawings would take at least three months after we're done with design development. Five months, sorry.
End of the year, early next year.
Right. And we will stress that for the staff, I mean, you have other projects coming as well. And so we've got the USGA lined up, as well as obviously some hospital projects. So we do, we're trying to get these things staged in a way so that staff is not overwhelmed.
Lydia, anything else just at the moment?
I think I'm good, thanks, John.
Judy?
So I do have parking questions. And it'd be good to get your gross number, which I heard a minute, moment ago, was 771 as the total spaces. In the work that had been in, I think it was called Exhibit B, that showed parking spaces at the main lot, the tennis shop, the pool, the golf maintenance, and the railroad lot, those numbers came up to 689 on the document. So I'm just, so I do need to reconcile, and I did all my puts and takes of what went in and what went out. And I really only came up with about, you know, about 37 additional spaces that were coming to fruition. So I think it'd be good if we all went back to that source document that we started with, plowing these numbers. And one of the terms that I didn't understand at all was this lost demand due to drivers moving. I'm like, okay, what's that?
Obviously, if the shuttle fleet moves today, when the shuttle is picked up, the driver parks in the overflow lot or the other lots, gets into his shuttle and drives his shuttle. He doesn't report to another section of the resort for work. He reports to his shuttle for work. And so if the shuttles are no longer where they are, the drivers are no longer reporting to that location, they're reporting to wherever the shuttle is. So if the shuttle is parked on the greenhouse campus, then that is where the shuttle drivers will drive their cars and park and pick up their shuttles.
Right, and I understand the concept of those 100 spaces there, but, so when they're in movement and moving around from the Holly to the Carolina to the resort, they aren't parked per se, but you're saying that they might have an interim parking space?
Today, parking, today shuttles are staged, we call it staged at various locations. They're staged in front of the Carolina, they're staged in front of the club. And right now, which is, we'll have to go away, they're staged on the access road right there at Cherokee, the dirt road between where the USGA is going in and the shuttle parking.
Right, the railroad lot.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that has a name or what, but you'll see occasionally two shuttles there.
Right. But those aren't not, those are transient.
Those are not parked, those are transient. There's a driver, and they're ready to move them based on a call.
Okay. So I just didn't, I didn't understand how that factored into the parking spaces, so...
Those do not factor in at all.
Okay, that's how I took it.
The transient ones do not factor in at all.
Right, okay. And then I also didn't include the 20 spaces for the shared parking at the USGA, because I, you know, there's about 550 spaces on the main campus according to that earlier document. And I just wanted to understand, I think what we need to understand is the gross spaces that are now in the main lot, by the pool and by the tennis shop, you know, what that number is, and then how is that number changing over time?
We will agree to have our staff sit with Alex and Darren and go over the tables one by one.
Okay, that'd be great.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
That'd be very helpful.
We will point out, there was one change in the overflow lot that we did count three different times in the last three days, the number of parking blocks, which is technically what we have to use for defining that parking, and there's 61 parking blocks.
Okay. That's great, thank you. Couple of comments on the renderings. I think there's just no getting away from how large this facility is, no matter how you look at it, which view you take. I would say that one thing that occurred to me in seeing the view from, you know, the putting area, is that the turret actually sort of looks... I never caught this play between the shape of this turret and the shape of the clubhouse per se. So, I mean, it's interesting that it, you know, there's some symmetry there and that look being carried forward over here. But I think it's just, and thank you for these, I think it does help to show the spacing on this one in particular, between the two buildings.
Anything else, Judy, at this time?
Not for me.
Jane, I'll go to you and then to Kevin. Jane, go right ahead.
Thank you. One of the things that's different about this application from many applications where you're trying to figure out the parking is that on this site, we already have the existing club campus and all of its activities. And what I'm not seeing in here is a breakdown of what, although you've got a list in Exhibit B, you've got the little chart of the number of existing spaces, you don't have anywhere a breakdown of the existing needs for setting aside the lodge, setting aside the US Opens, setting aside the USGA, what's the background drumbeat of parking needs? And of course, the resort was built, you know, grandfathered in, not according to the current PDO. So we don't know how many spaces it has relative to, if you were building the whole thing today, how many parking spaces would be required for the clubhouse and all of those activities? And I do understand that there's an ebb and flow, and sometimes a year, there's a bigger demand than other times a year, and some days of the week are different. And also that there can be special events which lead to overflow parking. I mean, what I keep hearing is that ordinarily, a member who wants to play golf or go to dinner can find a place to park, but all bets are off if there's a special event. So that's a puzzle piece that I'm not seeing in the information that we had either in the initial round, the Exhibit B materials, or in the materials that came in on May 25th, or on the new information that you've kindly provided today. And that, that information is important because if you're asking us to put in a condition that we figure out what the PDO would require as far as the number of parking spaces for the new lodge operations, and for replacement of the parking spaces that are now where the USGA buildings will eventually go, but that if you take away any of the amenities such as the tennis courts, that you should be able to reduce the required number of spaces by that number? We don't know whether the background number of club spaces, if that's the easiest way to say it, whether you're already ahead of the game, you've already got extra spaces, or whether you're short some spaces. So in order to understand whether that's a fair condition, and whether these other numbers, and I know that the numbers are to a certain extent best estimates and so forth, but whether they're in the ballpark or not, because there's one piece of the information that's missing, and that would be, I've tried to ask for it before, probably not very, very well, but that's the piece of information that I feel is important. So that, and I don't know if you have it tonight, but that's what I, one thing that I am looking for.
Couple of things I'll say, which may or may not be popular, I guess, is historically, when we built the pool, historically when we've added other additions, this is what we've done. We have added parking based on the requirements there. We're all smart people, and I will guarantee you, I will handle you, and I will include staff on this, I will bet you the two staff members over there, along with their boss, wouldn't come up with the same numbers. And I'm not sure, in going to this and in asking for zoning changes, how much time we're going to spend on parking that by our own definitions, we just said, is only sometimes an issue like it was on Sunday for the concourse. We've had several busy days this year for parking. We've had several busy days this year for parking. There hasn't been one hour in the last four weeks where we have not had parking available. Now, that parking is not where people want to be, and it won't be, no matter what plan we pick. There is always the 5% rule that says there's always parking there, but nobody wants that particular space. You know, it's just like 8:00 AM tee times. Everybody wants an 8:00 AM tee time, there's only so many of them. So if we're not putting people on public roads for parking as we are on Ritter, and we are working with the village on correcting that problem as well, we're a little concerned that we're going to get so wrapped up in parking numbers that we're going to miss a lot of other points. Now, the guy sitting next to me told me to do the estimate that is requested with time of day and everything else for the various categories will take months. I don't want to speak for you, so I, but it will take months. If that's what you guys are requesting, that's fine, and we'll, we'll deal with that. I don't know whether we have months to deal with that particular issue, and at some point in time, we come back to Tom's point that says it's not in our best interest not to have parking. We're going to correct parking. And at some point, we have to trust you, and at some point, you have to trust us. And I guess that's all I'm going to say on that particular topic at this point. Obviously, if you want to force that issue, I guess you certainly have the ability to do it. I'm not sure how we would write it in the conditions, and I'm not sure we could come to an agreement on a condition like that. And we're comfortable with the condition on parking today. The only thing that we might be able to push is, again, D, I think it's number six, which talks about the up and down. Maybe there's some play there on how much it moves up and down, but again, we've also said that that would be based on village review, not simply PDO. It would have to go through staff, so.
Well, we've, we've got to look after not just the council and, and the applicant, but also the neighboring residents and property owners.
Right.
So we've, and we've got, we've got a job to do here, and our job is to evaluate. And if we don't have the information, we can't evaluate. So that's why I'm asking for it. And I, I do understand that it's difficult, and I do understand that it's squishy to a certain extent, but I don't like to have just an empty area that we haven't looked into at all, because this is, this is, as everybody keeps saying, and it's true, one of the most important things in the last 100 years, and we want to make sure that we get it right. And I know you're interested in getting it right, and you're interested in having a wonderful, so of course you are, but we are interested in making sure that it's done properly too. So that, that's why I'm asking that.
And can I ask one question back?
Yeah.
What number of residents are complaining about parking bleeding over off of this campus?
It's not, it's not that parking is bleeding off of the campus onto the neighboring roads. There is parking on the neighboring roads sometimes from other events, but we want to make sure that when this application gets the green light to go ahead, that we've got something workable and that the parking's going to, going to be okay. And in order to do, have done my job on that, I want to know that I've looked at all the puzzle pieces and I haven't missed something. You know?
Kelly, did he leave, did Bob leave the presentation? Did Bob leave the presentation? Can we bring up the presentation?
And Jane, actually, as you're doing that, Jane, how would we frame that question you're asking a little differently? What's the base, what's the base information there? You've explained it, but maybe there's another way that helps me a little bit too, because I agree with what you're saying. It's, go ahead.
Well, the, the information that I'm looking for is what are the parking needs? How many parking spaces? And there's different kinds of parking needs. There's the members, and there's resort guests, and there's employees, and then I guess other visitors for special events who need a place to park. I mean, members aren't going to park out by the northwest tennis courts, probably. Well, not if they're, not if they're ordinarily, but you know what I mean? There's different areas of parking and different, if I could have a handle on what are, what's the ebb and flow of parking needs on this site over the usual cycle of time, that would be very helpful.
Something by type, in other words, members, guests, staff?
Right. I mean, I.
I think, excuse me, Judy, but I think the, I can understand how that'd be hard to do, but we hear a lot from the public who are, let's call them members or residents, right, that category, that parking is difficult on the campus grounds of the Pinehurst Country Club. And so, and I think that's, that's probably the, the heart of the question, although increasingly, since so many of the users of the courses one through five are coming, are driving in from out of town for different places, that's a demand that maybe has increased from what it was expected to be some years ago. So it's those sort of questions that we just want to make sure we're, we're covering and coming to the right number, because throughout the campus and other parts of the village, you know, parking is an issue, and you're trying to help deal with the Carolina hotel side of it too, for which we, thank you.
We are trying to do all we can. That's, that's where I'm going to leave. Can we get this enlarged?
If it's, yeah.
I do want to go to one slide that I said I probably wasn't going to go to.
That one, isn't it?
I thought it was going to include it, I don't.
Green roof?
That one with.
Yeah, but it was.
Well, that's carts, yeah, which is another.
All we were showing was the, the total number of spaces on here with carts, which, which obviously is a, another number. I mean, once you add the carts and the additional parking, I think our calculation was 1,112 spaces on this campus. There comes in some point in time where enough parking's, enough parking, and it becomes another issue besides just having asphalt from wall to wall. And again, as we've had these conversations, there's been confusion about cart parking and what its value is, and there's been confusion about other allowed items from PDO and what's allowed. So again, I understand what you're asking, I'm just concerned about the complexity of it and just how much time it's going to take and how much time I have to move forward with the project. That's where I'm, that's where I am. And believe me, I want to stress, everything we've shown right now, I think indicates we've listened, and we're trying to listen, and we're trying to make the decisions necessary for both of us to move forward. And with the Carolina parking and with Barrett Road, which I'm sure was, came to surprise to everybody, and with some of the other ideas we've come up with, I think we're trying to demonstrate.
No, no worries about that.
A true understanding.
I would, I would feel much more comfortable if we had a handle on the existing parking needs, some kind of a handle, and it, and I'm sure it's going to be a number that goes up and down.
Let me suggest a baseline that we probably already have, that I don't know what it would add up to, but might be interesting to go back and recompute and tabulate what the parking needs are for the golf course, based upon the holes and how the calculation is done in the PDO, based upon the dining facilities there, and just create that as a baseline and say, that number comes up to whatever. Then look at what you have today, and then look at what you are projecting in here as a, as a reasonable baseline that we could all grasp and understand. Will it ebb and flow and sometimes not be enough, maybe, and probably, but I, I think that to create all the possible permutations that one could imagine is interesting, but I, I think we're just, we need to look and see, okay, here's what we would be required to have out of the PDO, here's what they have, and here's what they're projecting for the future. And look at that and say, where are we out of balance and, and what, where do we see some, you know, scary parts?
We will do what we can. I will ask you one question, though, and I'd like an honest answer. If this showed we were overparked, would anybody approve it with no additional parking?
If it shows you're overparked?
Right. If we were showed by PDO we were overparked, would you all agree right now to no additions?
Probably not.
Thank you.
And the only reason I'm saying it that way, Dick, is it's, the issue of parking is humongous and, and now and into the future.
Everywhere.
Correct. But, but particularly to get it right on this site with these two projects, in this key area of the Village of Pinehurst, the site of the USGA, the home of the Pinehurst Country Club and the Pinehurst Resort, the heart of your business, you want to make it right, and boy, we sure do too, and there's no question about that. And I'm sure we can find a way to do that, and we'll, we'll keep working hard to that end. I'd like to make sure that I, Kevin has a couple of comments here on this, so I'd like to go to Kevin right now with his questions, and we can come back for some further ones from council.
I have a couple more.
We'll come back to that. Let's have Kevin go ahead. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, what I was going to say is, you know, I left the last meeting saying that, you know, I had three things. I wanted to, you know, understand what it was going to look like, because I thought there was some meeting of the minds that they were going to use some design voodoo, not to lower the size of it, but to try to figure out how to make the scale, you know, kind of, kind of some tricks, like I thought, like the green roofs on two ends were, was a trick to lower the scale. And I was thinking that if people saw it, they would see it as not as big when, when they see a finished product. But, you know, so I, I guess basically, there's no change from when we saw it three, three months ago to today, right? That look from, from the, from the Pageant Center, that's no change in that. Would you agree with that?
I would agree that you are correct in theory, that there is absolutely no change in that building from what was approved by HPC. We did, though, present for review some alternatives in the roof design, in the colors, and made the decision to go back. So I, I'm only clarifying that we did go through some changes to see how they looked and went back to the original HPC design.
So that was one of the things that I needed some clarity on. Then I needed tightening of the parking numbers. I think everybody needs it. I needed to understand the pine straw parking, only because I feel like the public are just looking at the things that are included in the PDO, and I think the overflow parking plays a role in, in making sure that people aren't parked out on streets and stuff like that. And I'd agree with you, Dick, there's not as big of a problem of people pushing out in the street from the resort, you know? But I, I didn't understand who parks where. I was really excited about all the additional Carolina parking, but then I realized it was all employee parking, and there was only, what, 36 additional spaces, if I'm correct, for self-parkers at the Carolina, is that correct?
I think it's 39, but also, also you would add to that Barrett Road if that gets approved.
No, three are valet, so if you're a self-parker, which are the people, the biggest offenders of the Ritter Road chaos, is self-parks. It looks like 35, and you know, I don't know, is that the number to stop the Ritter Road chaos? It seems low to me. It seems like you've got an incredible employee plan, but my, my point to you, Dick, is you, you brought the Carolina into play, we had in our agreement that we're going to talk about that at a future point, you know? And I'm just, this is kind of a five-year plan by definition, we're not even going to talk about the parking garage, the prior of the US Open, and then it's built, probably five years. So I kind of look at this five-year plan, and I'm worried, you know, about frankly, the Carolina parking. I mean, if we're, if we're, this is the plan for the next five years, you know, are we still going to have the neighborhood parking? Because I agree with you, Dick, I don't think that that pushes into the neighborhoods, the country club parking, as much as the Carolina. And I, I really, you know, I thought that you might, we're going to move valet and open that up and have them, have the valet runners run to that, maybe that new parking area you were going to build, but, I mean, I mean, maybe I'm more comfortable if this doesn't count as that discussion. Does that make any sense, Dick, that we still got a long-term issue with the Carolina? You know, remember that little sidebar thing we had in our agreement?
Yes.
Do you think this satisfies that?
I think that the sidebar in the agreement includes the Carolina, includes some other options that are still not under discussion, and certainly yet, I should say not in discussion yet, and that are still forthcoming. And again, the Carolina was our first stab at trying to address an issue, and I think, I think there is a focus on some people's part that parking is a sign for everybody, and that isn't the case. We have employees who park in the front. They park in the front because there wasn't enough space in the back. Now we're making enough spaces in the back, we're freeing up people, spaces in the front, and we're still thinking it's not enough. If necessary, maybe we take parking all the way down Carolina Vista and have parallel parking down Carolina Vista.
Like, you know.
It's, I, I think our point here is, is we're adding 86 spaces to the Carolina that will be used by people when necessary and as necessary. And each day at the Carolina Hotel, each day at the golf course is different. And I am perfectly willing to stand here and say, we have got to do a better job of certain operational needs. I was going to point out the fact, we've even had discussions about the possibility of putting a parking control gate right there to better direct people, sorry, I should, you have to look right here, just, thank you, just north of the USGA access lot, so that we can better control traffic in days where we have high demand. And so that when we do have special groups, we can have those special groups, and again, I'm talking like, we've already had this discussion, I'm really not making this up on the fly, so that we can have volunteers from First Tee, which was here yesterday, I think it was, directing their customers here first, so that the big lots become free, because right now, they're just got free parking right into here. So that's where obviously they're all going. Those are things we have to work on. It is not just a function of spaces, it is a function of operations as well. And I think we're seeing that. Sorry, Kevin, I'm, I'm.
I'm just asking a point-blank question. Is that, that you, how many employees do you think are parking up in that? I've never seen an employee park in the Carolina lot, I'd be too scared if I worked for you to park in, park in the main Carolina lot. But how many employees, like, you think you've got 10 cars a day doing that?
30. 30.
30 people, right?
Most of the spa.
So you would think that this is an increase of 66, 66 self-park vehicles in this plan?
Yeah.
Is that what, you'd agree with that?
And again, I want to stress, that's before Barrett Road.
Yeah, yeah, I know, before Barrett Road, and, but I'm just seeing, I'm, I'm seeing the problem, I feel like you control where your staff parks, the self-parks are going to park wherever the heck it's easier on them, and, you know, that front right lot and the front left, it seems like where they're going to go. They can't go to the front left because it's valet. I'm just saying, I mean, you know, I didn't think, think we were thinking this long-term, but since it kind of, I'm getting a little tied up in the fact that if we don't think about that now, then this, that whole Ritter Road thing doesn't get fixed till 2034 or something. twenty thirty-four or something. So, I mean, I think you won't want to hear about it either anymore, Dick, and we don't want to hear about it, you don't want to hear about it. I mean, I'm just, we're just all trying to say, we're on the same team, you want your customers to be able to park, to consume, uh, the product, and I'm just, you know, I almost see how we can make the club work. Uh, I would like to make a point on, on Jane's point. I think the uncomfortableness is, you literally could reduce the number of spaces. If you could relieve us of that, where you don't have to reduce the number of spaces, maybe all that studying doesn't have to be done, you know, and that saves you thirty days. Because maybe, maybe it's just the fact, gosh, there's the perception that there's not enough parking there, but you could still reduce them by taking away amenities, you know? You know, I'm not, maybe that is a simple fix to that complex issue that, uh, Jane brings up. But I'm just really concerned that, you know, I don't, and I'm, I apologize even for this, Dick, but it seems like we're dealing with the Carolina ahead of schedule, which is awesome, you should be congratulated, but I'm scared it's not going to fix the impending problem. And then the Barrett Road, uh, you cited as, I, I was excited about the Barrett Road being an overflow for the Carolina, but you cited that as an employee lot in the future. So that made that excitement go away, you know? So, does that make any sense?
Um, I don't think we specify it as employee. I said we, I think we specify it was an option. Sorry, I have a problem with my foot.
Sure.
Excuse myself here in a minute, but, um, we talked about it as an alternative possibly for caddies at one point in time, but again, I don't think that we've solidified those types of comments yet, because I don't think we've come to an agreement that Barrett Road's even, possible might not be the right word, but it's still certainly something that has to have a, a certain amount of work done.
Right.
I think Barrett Road, for me, actually, Kevin, I'll come back to you, but Barrett Road, I think, is a problem from a safety point of view. An entrance would be on a curve, big curve, and it's so, that may or may not have.
It would not have to be, but it one, one.
But to have the idea is, is very helpful, Dick. Kevin, did you want to pursue anything else on that point, and then we'll go on?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to make clear that the uncomfortableness, the, the complexity of what Jane asked might could be solved with you.
Okay. Did we lose him?
Okay.
I think we lost him.
Have a perception.
Okay.
And then the second thing is, I thought we agreed on a condition that I don't see in here. I, maybe I don't have the updated conditions, which I should like to see. Uh, I thought we agreed on the condition that you were going to do those parking areas at the Carolina excluding the Barrett Road property. And I don't see that in here in the conditions, unless I misread it.
No.
We'll have to think about that, yeah. Think about that.
Is it there? Is it there?
No.
No.
Okay. I thought we mutually agreed, you'd have no problem as long as we left the engineering one out, the Barrett Road one.
I don't believe that, um, I don't believe we considered that, Kevin. I, I think we've talked about it, but it's, it is not a condition on the list of this guy.
I asked him at last meeting, if you're going to do it anyway, why not make it a condition?
I'm not sure we'd make a condition to this. We might make a condition to something else, only because if you give me permission tomorrow, I'll have the, the spaces done by, as soon as I can get them asphalted.
Right, okay.
But, again, I, I have a problem committing to something that requires approvals I don't know will come.
Okay.
Well, I thought they didn't. I thought they were easier approvals, and you were going to do them in the next couple years, uh, whereas the other one was going to be done later, um, you know? I'm just trying to get through this parking thing, and I thought that, that this is, be helpful to get you through this parking, uh, issue, and I'm trying to help solve this issue today, you know? That's what I'm trying to do.
Right. I, I, I have no objections in theory to your proposal.
Okay. And also, I have a lot of trust in staff, you know? Language said mutually agreeable by finest in staff. I think that's another way on these reductions, instead of just an automatic reduction. That would be, that would solve that having to wait a month for that research, you know? I don't want to do that, Dick, you know? I don't want, I don't want to do that. I'm just trying to serve our citizens correctly, and, uh, heck, you want the same thing we want, and, uh, I'm just, I think it's just a matter of writing it down. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'm just, you know, sure, I have a little concerns about the cosmetics. I'm going to get over that. But it sounds like it could evolve, and maybe, maybe there might be some, that not, that's not part of this approval process. I get it. Everything else is parking and, and us understanding the pluses and minuses, and I don't understand why you need that reduction, uh, which I think makes everybody uncomfortable, because we, we're unsure if we have enough spaces there already. But if a reduction, if mutually agreeable by staff, that would, that would solve a lot of what Jane said, I think. And, and, and making the, 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 uh, parking improvements at the Carolina, uh, part of this, except for the Barrett Road, I, I think would make this, uh, much easier, uh, for people to see, because you've done a lot, and you, why not get credit for it? Uh, and the conditions for this, you know? It's almost like you don't want it on here. They'll get credit for doing it if it's on here. And, uh, you could say time, timeframes that, whatever you want to put on there, you know, three years, you know, I'm not trying to say yesterday or today, but I'm just trying to get it through, through this hurdle, and, uh, I thought those are two good ideas to get us through this hurdle.
Okay. Um, I'd like to, um, anticipate any other, a couple more questions, and then we need to get some next steps, uh, as to exactly what's going to happen from this meeting tonight, especially on reconciling the parking numbers. Jane, I think you had asked for a little time, you had another point to make, maybe on stormwater or whatever else. Yeah. Go ahead.
Just quickly, a couple of questions on the new numbers that came out on the materials today. The sixty-one car spaces by the Western Tennis Court based on existing wheel stops. We've had staff who've counted more cars out there. I've seen cars parking in the pine straw out there. I just want to make sure we've got an accurate number of, of spaces that have to be, um, replaced elsewhere from there. Um, and then on, on figuring out how many spaces you'll be putting back or adding. Fifteen or perhaps thirty for van drivers to park at their personal autos at the greenhouse lot, but then there's also the hundred spaces, and it seems that the fifteen are part of the hundred?
Correct.
So we don't think we should count those twice. And, and then the twenty shared spaces for the new U S G A parking lot. Again, we have to have a better understanding of how many are really going to be free from the U S G A parking lot, and when they can be shared and so forth. Those are details, but.
Yes, regarding, again, Adam Cochran with Kimley Horn, um, regarding the lost demand due to the driver parking, again, that piece of the table is focused on parking at the main campus. So as we move the shuttles and their drivers' personal vehicles off campus, it reduces the parking demand there in the heart of main campus. So we're pulling fifteen vehicle spaces, we could actually pull thirty vehicle spaces that park in the overflow or in the pine straw, we're pulling them down to the greenhouse lot. Um, so we're trying to be conservative, uh, on the low number to say.
But you've got fifth, um, lost demand due to drivers moving, fifteen. Added spaces at the greenhouse lot, a hundred. Those, the fifteen are part of the hundred, right?
Because, right, they are, they're moving, and they, they are, they are part of, yes, they would.
Think about the numbers. I don't think they should be counted twice, but that's a detail.
And then we can clarify, um, the, the twenty shared spaces with U S G A.
The U S G A, I think we have to have a better understanding on, yeah. In other words, all the numbers are.
So, again, I will point out, if you take a hundred and eleven, you take out fifteen, you take out twenty, you're still ahead of the game.
Well, I think that's arguable.
Yeah, I, I advocate getting the baseline, going back to that Exhibit B, whatever the numbers are, whether it's five fifty on the main campus or some other number, and then now let's look at that, let's look at what the P D O requires for all those facilities, and now let's look at what you're bringing in this, by working in these minuses and pluses and netting things and moving things around. We, if we can follow that, then I think we'll feel like that, okay, we understand where you are today, we understand where you're going, and that you're servicing at, you know, an adequate level or more than adequate level.
Their comment on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, I'd like to, um, I, I mentioned a little while ago, we would be, want to talk about the parking. Uh, we'd talk about, um, some of the who's going to park where, and I see that's really still an open question, but will continue to come up, and I'm not asking to comment any further on that just yet. I'm wondering if, um, the applicant and the council members and staff would allow a suggestion from me, uh, to resolve the parking spaces and have been discussed. Um, it's sort of already set up because of the staff working with the applicant, but why don't we have a little task force of, I would say, representatives from Dick's office who have been working on the parking, certainly Darren or Alex from the staff? And I would ask Jane and/or, and/or Judy to consider participating with that group, to get the baseline numbers come to consideration, we all, so we all understand exactly whose numbers are what, and to come up with an agreement on a solution for what, what's the number we agreed to in parking. Uh, that's just been in my mind for the last thirty minutes or so, haven't discussed it with the village manager, haven't discussed it with, uh, others in the council, but would that be, um, a way to kind of get some folks around the same table and drill through this parking number issue?
Alex is giving you a thumbs up.
Excuse me?
Alex is giving you a thumbs up.
Okay. I couldn't see you back there. Alex and Darren had his arms folded, so it wasn't sure. Um, is the village manager reasonably comfortable with that idea?
If Darren's okay with that, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right. And I, I thought between the information, I know that Judy and Jane have developed over time on this, and it's evident from tonight, that it would be very helpful to represent the council on that. Would that be all right?
Sure.
Yep.
I've, I'll send you my spreadsheet.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Free spreadsheets here.
Darren, comment, please, or did you?
No, I was just going to add that it's, it's going to be relatively straightforward, straightforward.
I think so.
P D O, uh, calculation.
Do we have the, do we have the construction drawings for the current facilities?
Good construction drawing for the current, for, in order to do the P D O calculation, we do not need the construction drawings.
Based on the concepts.
Not. We do not need them for the, for, for the P D O calculation for the golf course facility and its parking requirements.
The clubhouse.
Included within the, within the golf course calculation.
So for the conference spaces there, we don't?
Included within the golf course calculation, correct.
All right, I'm not, I'm not understanding something, but, okay.
All right.
Talk about it later.
All right. We'll, we'll follow up starting tomorrow on how this could work, who needs what, and what we can do, but I, I think we need to, um, in order to focus and make a decision on this parking number, uh, and to make sure the council is, is concerned, is informed about it and agrees to it, I think we need to have a couple of council members as part of that discussion. So that's what we'll do. Jeff, we can speak tomorrow morning about that, and, uh, Dick will be in touch with you. All right, now, are there any other questions outside of the parking that council members want to address to the applicant tonight?
It just occurred to me that I know what Darren's talking about, and the result is going to be that there are council members that are not going to be, um, satisfied with the result.
Well, that may be true.
It is what our P D, P D O requires, so.
But, but, but let's just put that on the table.
It's.
I don't care who's, who is or isn't satisfied.
Yeah.
Just here, there's some facts, right? Let's put the facts on the table.
Yeah. Yeah. See where it all stands.
Yeah. I say that to say, at the end of the day, to satisfy everybody, we're going to need construction drawings.
Oh, I think that, well, I think that may, yeah, that may amend, that may amend, you know, what, what the condition is, I suppose, over time, but I think we can, we need to set that number now. I don't think, I don't think the members of the village council are going to agree to this transaction and the conditions unless we see pretty hard numbers that we're comfortable with, and the only way I think we're going to get to that is to have the three parties around the table. We'll see where that goes.
I, I honestly think we could come up with conditions, uh, to get this approved, but, I mean, I'm not, I need all of us working together on that, but I, I do think there, you know, it's, if, if the numbers turn out differently, um, but, but, you know, trust the staff to work with, work with them. I, I don't know, I just think this is just a first step in the conditional zoning, and I, I just, I asked them for some things, you know, and, um, I, I wanted to understand them, uh, and I, I don't know, I thought there, the result of this, it should be, we should be able to create the conditions that everybody is comfortable with, pretty quickly.
Right. I think any, there may be other tweaks to the other conditions. I just think on the parking number and how we're going to get, how that number's going to theoretically be resolved, I think we need everybody on the same page for that.
I, I've been kind of biting my tongue on this subject here for the last hour, but, um, per, perspective, and I, I understand everybody's position on this and why this is such a sensitive issue for everybody on all sides. Parking is a big deal, and, and we continue to hear from our community concerns about parking across the village. We hear it from time to po, time, time, from time to time on this campus. But if you go back to the, the observation that's already been made, that to the degree that there may be existing parking challenges on the campus, it is not resulting in overflow anywhere else that we are aware of, we're aware of. That's the municipal concern. What we're all talking about otherwise is customer dissatisfaction. That's their concern. You all can take up that concern at the municipal level, I just don't know that it's our role.
I hear you.
And again, I just want to get a baseline down of what it is in terms of the number of spaces, what the P D O would require, and what they're going forward for the future. And if, we'll see what that tells us, and then you're absolutely right, that dichotomy between who has the responsibility. But I think, just, let's just lay it out there.
And, and I would have to say, in spite of the fact it takes time, this is one of the most meaningful discussions we can have for the long-term success of the Village of Pinehurst, the resort, the U S G A, and it's, it's critical. Thank you, Dick.
I do need to make it clear that we will eventually run out of time.
Yes, we're not, I understand that.
I, I need to make that perfectly clear.
That's why I think this task force can get at least the piece of this, its most of concern, resolved hopefully in a few days.
I do have one last question on this.
Judy?
Do you have one last question on this rendering?
Yes.
So it, it looks that like the croquet court is level with the sidewalk that's in front of the lodge versus being below, a little bit lower. Is that, is that an illusion, or is that really how you're?
I would call it an illusion.
Okay.
I think it's artistic rendering, there's artistic, um, license, again, he's a, he is an artist, so he's going to make some creative licensing, some of that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, there's a soft incline, but it's much sharper than that, okay?
Yeah. I think it would be nice if it were level like that, but we're not there. All right. Seeing no other questions from the council? Excuse me? Did?
No, I just want to say thank you for, Dick, for supplying the, the drawings, and I hope you, you consider those conditions that, of what you're going to do with the Carolina. It's very informative to our public, so just for now, just consider them.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. Uh, council agreed, we'll move on from this subject and thank our guests very much for their time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think maybe a short break would be in order, and then we'll pick up with the rest of the regular meeting agenda, item number seven. So we'll take a break till, um, ten minutes to seven, six fifty, please?
Six fifty.
All right? You alright? I'd like to end the break, please, and get restarted, which will bring us, Kevin, you're hearing, it's okay, Kevin? Thank you. We'll be at item number seven on our agenda for tonight, discussion and consideration of Resolution 2110 to commit fund balance. Jeff, would you have a comment on that, and Kelly, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, we're not going to have any discussion on this after Dick's gone. There's no discussion?
I wasn't counting on any further discussion, Kevin, no, not, not.
You think we have this wrapped up?
I wouldn't say that, but I'm very hopeful that as far as the parking number and maybe other issues around that, that that will be assisted making that decision by what this little task force group can come up with over the next few days.
Well, I just want to make it clear that he agreed on that at the last meeting as a condition, and now that's changed between that meeting and this meeting. I think it's pretty important for that to be part of the conditions.
Okay.
And secondly, I think it's real important, you know, for their sake, that we understand the overflow parking that they still haven't clarified for us. And I trust the staff, we can make conditions, whatever conditions you want to make, and for our staff to execute, you know, you know, like, Jane, did you not like that idea of them not be able to go backwards if they lose an amenity on parking? Wasn't that a way to solve your issue on that? I thought that was a creative way to say, look, there should be no path backwards in parking, you know. So anyway, I didn't think we had a wrap-up discussion. I thought we just had a question and answer, Dick, I can bomb, and I, you guys feel we're wrapped up on this?
Well, it depends on whether you mean that wrap-up. I think we're...
Well, I'm trying to get to a conclusion by our next meeting, and I needed you to know my issues to do that. I guess I hope everyone else is doing that, and because, you know, at some point, people need a speedy trial, and, but I'm kind of stuck on those two issues. Those are important issues to me. And I don't understand how, last week, they were, two weeks ago, they're...
Which ones again, Kevin? Which two issues?
Well, I asked if you're going to do it anyway, why not make it a condition, the expansion of the employee lots and expansion of the parking up at the Carolina, which are important to our public. And he says the additional 36 will really turn into additional 66 because of new employee parking. I think that's very important, and it's helpful for people to understand we're looking after their interests. Not only helpful for Dick, it's helpful for us. And I also feel like the overflow parking, which doesn't count towards any of these numbers, if we understood it, it might have a favorable view on the amount of parking that is really available up there at the campus, Carolina. And, you know, I've released my other issues, I'm only down to those now.
So in my notes from the last meeting, I have Condition 11 Carolina parking as well.
Yeah, yeah. And why did it get removed?
It's actually Condition 12. I wrote it down, too. Because 11 would be in the 25. Well, that's already done, yeah.
I think that's fine. I think...
So I just don't want that to be left out of the equation. I'm real serious about having that included, and there'll be a motion for me to add it if it's not.
Well, I think between now and then, we should create the conditions.
Be careful about how you proceed on that. Remember that conditions have to be agreed upon by both parties in order to be even considered for...
Why, no, they were. I was there.
If they won't, if they won't agree, and that doesn't mean we can't make another run at them, but if they won't agree, you can't just make a motion to add it. You just have to vote on what's there.
Right.
There was agreement two weeks ago.
We just heard from Dick that he won't agree. That's...
He changed his mind.
Well, yeah, I guess. Just a...
Well, I think we have time to work on the conditions as we go through other stuff.
Let me ask a question, though. They've given us, they've given us a map. In two meetings, they've gone through that map of the Carolina with all the spaces and all the places. They've said in open meetings, they're going to have this done by the end of the year. I'm comfortable, maybe I'm the only one, I'm comfortable with their commitment on that without making it a condition, and I'm not comfortable pushing it since he said, he said no tonight, but he said in two meetings, they are doing this by the end of the year.
So I have, you know, I'm just making the comment that, I wrote it down last time as Condition 11 Carolina parking. I personally think it's, doesn't have anything to do with the rezoning that's going on across the street, so I'm perfectly fine to leave it out.
And that's, that was my other point, too. It has nothing to do with what's going on across the street at the...
Well, it kind of does, because there's no, they're not being forced to build parking before the building is occupied, so all the parking will be at the Carolina, you know. So it's going to be a massive, you know, crap storm for four years. So the Carolina is in play. So I disagree with you. Now, if we were requiring them to build the parking space, and they didn't have to do all this expansion at the Carolina to accommodate this, I think you're right.
In the incentive agreement, they said they would be working good faith to, isn't what they're doing at the Carolina a fulfillment of that provision in the incentive agreement? Is it, if it is, then...
I asked that question, I wasn't sure, because I'm not sure if this solves it. So, I don't think so.
It's a step toward.
It's a step towards, is all I see it as.
Step toward, and they did not count those spaces into the calculations for the club campus, so.
Which they shouldn't.
No. Which, you know, it's fine.
I think they're doing it right. And I'm a fan of where they're going, I'm just saying, I'm thinking of my fiduciary responsibility to the public. You know, you say leave it out, I say leave it in, because these conditions are, people are going to read them, and they're going to reflect that frankly, with this change, there'll be additional parking at the Carolina, it sounds like it could total up to 60 spaces if they force the employees to park in the new lots. I think it's an important point, and I just hope you guys don't underestimate, because they're conflating the parking issues between the Carolina and the PCC, and I think I know the public, and I think they would like to see this in there. That's why, you're right, though. I mean, you know, I'm not saying anybody's wrong, I'm just saying, they agreed to it, I'd like to push it.
Kevin, another thing he pointed out tonight, this is the first time I've heard it, he said this parking, the parking, well, number one, he said, we are going to correct the parking, I wrote that down, but he said it's not only the number of spaces, but he's seeing operational issues, and it's like a light bulb has come on with the operational issues, and so that's something that I don't want us to lose sight of that.
I think Jane and I said it correctly, it's the first step of addressing it, it's not the final step.
I think Kevin's making a good point with regard to how you could logically tie their proposed expanded parking at the Carolina to this project, because it will be part of their short-term solution. They've said as much.
It is, yes.
So if we can get them to agree to that condition, I think, I think there's a clear linkage there.
There's a clear linkage that they put there, not us.
Sorry?
They made the linkage, not us.
Yeah, you're right. By the same token, I think that there might be room for us to require a condition that the, whatever parking is to be constructed at the greenhouse locations could be done ahead of schedule as well, because it's not tied up in that same campus problem that they have right now. And they told us they can't do the parking at the same time they're doing all this construction on the main campus, but the greenhouse is a different area, it's completely different campus, it's a different area. It seems to me like they should be able to get that done as well, and it could also be part of the short-term solution.
Right. But all I'm saying is, I don't want to sound negative, I think we could put conditions in place, especially mutually agreeable by Piner's and the staff, because I know the staff knows what they're doing. I think there's a lot of ways to put the conditions in place to move this forward, but if they're going to do this anyway, I think it should be in a condition, I think it should be tied to it. And I still want to know the overflow parking, because we can use that when we talk to the public, that yeah, that doesn't count this, you know. And I'd like to be able to do that. So those are the two reasons. I'm just trying to do my fiduciary responsibility, I'm not. And I'm honestly trying to move it forward for the client, too. I think, I think we're getting there, and I think he's helping. So I don't want to say any negative. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we have this to reconsider, that Carolina parking issue, how we're going to, you know, work through that.
We scared Brooke off.
Come back, come back.
Thank you all for letting me call in. You regret it now.
Okay, Brooke, item number seven, then.
Perfect. Over the past year, there are, there have been two purposes for which village council has expressed desires to commit fund balance as of June 30th, 2021, that's fiscal year 2021. The first being some funds related to Give a Memorial Library and Tufts Archives, and the second for... the second for future capital. Once council commits a portion of fund balance, as you know, those constraints may only be changed by another formal action by the council. And that is because council is the highest decision, decision-making authority here at the village. So I'll briefly cover the two categories that we have identified over the past year or so. The first of that, as I mentioned, was related to the Given Memorial Library and Tufts Archives. And that's in connection with the agreement that was signed on March 1st, 2020, between Village Council and the Given Memorial Library Tufts Archives Board. That was a non-binding agreement that outlined the future that each party saw for the library and archives for the future. This agreement included the village's intent to commit $1 million of general fund fund balance for the purpose of enhancing library services and archives resources for the existing Given Memorial Library and Tufts Archives building. Approval of the attached Resolution 2110 would commit the funds for improvements to the existing building and other operational improvements. Also included in the proposed fiscal year 22 budget to be considered tonight at the next agenda item is a provision to approve the use of $725,000 of that million dollars of committed funds for the following capital uses in the upcoming budget. $400,000 for library and archives expansion design, and the plan is for that to occur in a separate capital project fund. $275,000 for accessibility improvements to the existing building, and $50,000 to install internet fiber to the existing building. The second category is related to future capital. On February 9th of this year, the village's fund balance policy was amended by Resolution 21-03 to include a provision to commit a percentage of our fund balance for future capital needs if fund balance at the end of the year exceeded 40% of actual general fund expenditures. This commitment would take place in the form of a separate resolution each year, and that's just to ensure that we have a clear trail of council's intent to commit those funds for that purpose. The calculation of fund balance committed for future capital will occur after fiscal year end and will be reported in the annual comprehensive financial report. And that is because those amounts will not be finalized, our actual general fund expenditures and our fund balance numbers will not be finalized until after year end, after June 30th. The approval of the attached Resolution 21-11 would commit the excess funds for future capital. Two resolutions are presented for your consideration, and if approved, these amounts will be reported in the committed fund balance category in the fiscal year 21 annual comprehensive financial report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And so there's really two resolutions that we'll approve tonight under this item. And thanks for a good explanation. Questions from council on this? Kevin, anything from you on this item?
I'm good, I'm good.
All right. Lydia?
Just.
You had a couple of questions earlier, I think. Go ahead.
No, just, no, I just want to clarify. You know, we, we, Resolution 2103, when we decided to adopt this, were we going to set money aside? So it looks like this resolution, the future capital, was just a mechanism, we need to do that. But then, at some point, do we come back and have to identify that amount and do formalize that somehow, or does this formalize? Do we need something subsequent to this, or this will do it?
This will do it.
Okay, so then you just do the calculation. The calculation flows from this resolution.
Exactly, because the calculation and how it has to be calculated is included in this resolution, and it identifies that it will take place as we prepare the comprehensive annual financial report at the end of the year. After the end, technically, after the end of the year. But the action by council has to take place before June 30th for it technically to be committed in the financial statement. So that's why the order of operations is as it is.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure. Good question.
Judy or Jane, any questions on this? All set? Is there a motion then on item number seven?
I move to approve Resolution 21-10 to commit a portion of fund balance for $725,000 for the following capital uses in fiscal year 2022. $400,000 for library slash archives expansion design. $275,000 for accessibility improvements to the existing library building, and $50,000 to install internet fiber to the existing library building. I further move to approve Resolution 21-11 to commit a portion of fund balance in the general fund to future capital.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Judy Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Brooke, thank you very much. We'll move on now into item number eight, and I think, Brooke, you're going to handle that, too, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Ordinance 21-09 is available for your review and consideration tonight for the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget, which begins on July 1st. The amounts in this ordinance are the same as those presented by the manager on May 11th. This budget totals $23,987,230 in both revenues and expenditures. The language in section four is new to the ordinance this year, and it documents the amount of committed fund balance that will be expended this upcoming year, as we just discussed for the previous agenda item. This ordinance is provided for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is a discussion of the village budget, which we've looked at the last few meetings. Any questions for Brooke tonight? Kevin, anything?
I have a comment.
Please, Lydia.
Comment, kind of question. Back in December, when we were doing the retreat, and Natalie threw a comment out there about our tax rate and how it hadn't changed. So with Brooke's help, I, we figured out what our tax rate has been since 2005.
Right.
And it's been incredibly steady. In 2005, it was 31 cents, and now it's gone up half a penny. And that just tells me that you guys who work on this budget for six months work very hard to keep a stable tax rate. I don't know, I don't know what all goes into doing this, but it seems you guys might, must spend a lot of time, or a considerable amount of time with that, I don't know, that being one of your targets. I don't know if you want to comment, but that was significant. And if anybody wants to see this, I've got this. So that was the first thing, instability of our tax rate. But another thing, Brooke, and I'm not sure I've thanked you and staff for this notebook. You know, and in here, it says that we get the General Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, the award for distinguished, distinguished budget presentation. Does that go to the quality of what's in this notebook?
It does.
This, this is so impressive. In fact, I was, if anybody was still here, I was going to say, if you want to borrow this from me, if anybody's watching, you want to borrow this from me, this is so comprehensive, so well-done. So thank you. Thank Jeff, thank all of you for what you do for six months to get us to this place.
Thank you, thank you. And the document is available on the website as well, if anyone wants to access a PDF version of that, too.
I'll second that, Lydia, instead of saying all that. Second that.
It's probably a 12-month endeavor, if we really looked at it, not just six.
Already starting out next year.
Take a break, take a break.
As we learn from our Baldridge homework.
All right, I'm sorry. We had, we have not had a resolution on that. Number eight, please.
I move to approve ordinance 21-09, adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget for the village of Pinehurst.
That's a motion by Judy Davis. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Kevin Drum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. That motion carries. Item number eight, and move on to discussing item number nine on the agenda, which changes topics a little bit here. We'll get down into the nitty-gritty.
Got a couple, a couple of solid waste contracts for your consideration. One you've already, already seen, but we've also got the Lofton contract here for you to consider renewing. Go ahead, Mike.
Correct, okay. Good evening. The, the first item here is a consideration of a renewal of a solid waste contract for Lofton Garbage Service. Lofton is currently one of two providers or two contractors that provide trash recycle and yard debris collection services for CCNC. This is a one-year contract that would start on July the 1st, and then on June the 30th of 2022. It's the same contract as last year, but does include a CPI adjustment. The value is approximately $115,000, which exceeds the village manager's, the threshold for Jeff's authority to sign. We did reach out to the HOA representative for CCNC, who has indicated that the, their community is satisfied with both contractors, Lofton and our other one, Becky's Rubbish. So staff would recommend renewing this contract for one additional year.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council on the contract for Lofton Garbage Services? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the mayor or his designated to execute a contract between the village of Pinehurst and Lofton Garbage Services for fiscal year 2022.
There's a motion by Judy Davis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries. Move on into item, agenda item number 10. Jeff, do you have a comment on that? And this is a follow-up to our discussion last meeting, too.
Correct. As you recall, on the last meeting, we had some questions when this item came up. So we went back and spoke with the waste management provider for this particular contract and service. Also talked with the Pinewild Property Owners Association manager to get an understanding of what the gist of the concerns were. They're primarily leaks, hydraulic leaks of maintenance of the trucks that also can lead to not only the stains and on the pavement, but also can delay some of the services. So since that time, we've had several conversations between the three parties, the Pinewild Association, myself, and Waste Management. They have instituted some, some changes or some retraining, I guess I really should say, in regards to their staff for their pre and post-trip inspections. They've also, they've got a certain, a cycle with, where they're bringing their trucks in for more than depth inspection. There's probably a couple of other things along there. So they do have some spare trucks, for example, that they can roll into service if it's not too late in the day. So if they do have a breakdown late in the day, then you kind of, you pretty much have to come back in the next morning. But if it's earlier on, they can roll a spare truck into their, into the Pinewild to complete the, the rotation and the routes. We did talk to them about a, kind of a one-year probationary contract. They've agreed to do that at no CPI increase for July 1, which is the same as what they had previously proposed under the two-year agreement. Then we can always come back a year from now, and if everybody's still satisfied at that point in time, you know, that will renew for another year or two years, or whatever the pleasure of the council is at that juncture. So I, based on the steps that they've taken, I'd recommend that we proceed with approval of this contract on a one-year basis, and then we'll reevaluate as we, as we need to along the way.
Jeff, thanks very much for your comments, and also for the message you put together on this, so, over the last couple of days and follow-up to our meeting of May 25. Other questions on this contract from any council members? Jane?
I just want to thank you for all of the communication and sorting through this. That's an enormous help. I really do appreciate it.
No, no problem. I, I will, I'd like to, you know, acknowledge the, both Amy with the Pinewild Property Owners Association and Joy with Waste Management. They've both been very responsive and took this concern very seriously, Waste Management particularly.
Well, this helps us to sort through it and move forward. I appreciate it.
Judy, anything? No? Lydia?
Just ditto what Jane says. Thank you so much for working it out with them.
Kevin, any questions on the Waste Management?
No, I'd like to see the Pinewild group make a motion and second it.
Is there a motion to authorize this? Item number 10.
Lydia? I move to authorize the mayor or his designated, designated to execute a contract amendment extending the terms through June 30, 2022, between the village of Pinehurst and Waste Management of Carolinas for solid waste services to Pinewild for fiscal year 2022.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. That is item number 10. We'll go into item number 11. Any other business that a council member wishes to raise tonight, council or staff, I guess? Jane, please?
With respect to that bill that's, I guess, gone through the House now and is rattling around in the Senate, that would provide that municipalities are not allowed to make a tree ordinance without first getting a by-year leave from the state legislature. I, I'd like to write a letter about that and send it up there.
You're telling me a letter on behalf of the council, or just as a council person, or?
Well, I, I, on behalf of the village, I'm, on behalf of the council, yeah. Because I think there's a, a number of things about it, even though it doesn't directly correspond to our buffer ordinance that we've been working on. It's a degradation, degradation of local autonomy, and I think that's.
Absolutely.
Very poor. Are they saying that, you know, they can't trust the citizens to govern themselves locally? I, I think it's a matter of listening to short-term special interests rather than attending to stewardship, and, you know, all kinds of things like that. Killing the goose that laid the gold neck.
At least in two cases, there, there are elements of that bill that would erode the authority that we're not currently using. So it doesn't, the bill as written doesn't stop us from doing anything we're doing right now, but it would take away authority to do things in the future that we're not doing right now.
Exactly.
So that, that's, yeah, yeah. And, and we've talked about this a bit, Jeff's made good comments on that over the past time. Did I hear you're volunteering to write such a letter, or?
I'd be happy to.
All right. So the village's manager can be involved in that.
I'll take a crack at it and send it over to the real pro.
And from my point of view, I mean, I think I would have all of the council members' names on the letter. I think it's very helpful to do that. I'll sign it as mayor, but everybody's name should be on there.
Where is this bill right now, before writing letters? Where is it? Does anybody know?
It passed the House and it's crossed over to the Senate.
So it's over to the Senate?
Yeah, yeah. It passed the House 75 to 25, or whatever the right number is.
It's going to get through the Senate, something like this, I, I would say, but.
I didn't hear what you just said.
Jeff, I mean, Kevin, you were suggesting that we should write it to Senator McGinnis, or is that what your intention is, since the Senate hasn't voted?
I'm just trying to understand where it is, and I know it doesn't affect, impact our present bill, and I'm just, want to know why we're doing it, if it doesn't impact our present bill, but, and I want to know where the law stood. It might not even get enacted, but.
That's true. I think as Jeff Sandborn said, though, while it doesn't affect anything we now do, or potentially in our own buffer ordinance, it could affect, the bill as written, could affect things we might want to do in the future. So we do have a common interest with other municipalities there to, to prevent that, and to stand for the issue, which I think Jane is also making here, of the legislature continuing to take power from the, from municipalities and local authority.
I, I heard, I've heard it suggested, and, and I don't know to what degree it's true or not, but I've heard it suggested that there's not a lot of help out there from neighboring or other communities in North Carolina, because most of the communities that, that care very deeply about this already have local bills that are grandfathered in, so.
But, you know, to that point, and I sent you guys a list, there are 39 municipalities in one county that have local tree ordinances. Jane, one's Davidson, one's Cornelius, two communities that are a lot like ours, that you use as guidelines for us. And I'm curious what's in their local bills, if there, is there anything? I'm kind of getting off the point, but I'm just wondering what's in local bills of similar communities that might be guidelines for us. In terms of this one, to whom do we write? I would start with, find out what committee it's in, go to that committee chair, McGinnis, copy the League of Municipalities, copy Berger.
I'd copy more than Tom. I'd try to make it, you know, a bigger impact, because sometimes it looks like you're just going after him, you know? And if you're sending it to everyone, it's less, like the committee and all that, I think it's less personal.
I was thinking, the committee chair, maybe all the members of that committee who are considering it. And Tom might be on that committee, I'm not sure.
I don't recall him being on that, but, well, at one point, he may have been a sponsor of this, may still be, I don't know. No, I think distributing it widely is a good idea. We should do that, and I.
And Lydia, to the point, I'd sure like to see those tree ordinance, I'd like to see them and how they, I agree with you 100% on seeing that.
At least one.
Well, and we considered this as part of our local bill idea, and we didn't take that any further for a while because of other things we're working on, but
Right.
we want to come back to the buffer ordinance. I think this is a way to help do that, and finding out information from the other towns, I think we could.
See what's working.
The league, in fact, I'm pretty sure the, the League of Municipalities would be very helpful. First of all, they'd be very glad to see us right in this way to the legislature, and I think the league could also pretty easily supply information about the other towns and county that have local bills authorizing their, them to do certain things, so we can find that out. So let's get the letter drafted in that way, Jane, and go from there, all right? Is there any other, other business?
Yeah, I would just, like, I would like the final document of conditions emailed to me on where we, you know, not that it's official, where we, we think we're at on those conditions as a starting point. I'd sure like them a copy, because I got multiple versions in it, and then the one I see on the screen sometimes is different than the one in the packet. So I just want to make sure I'm operating from the
Yeah.
correct conditions, and I'd like to just send, send some thoughts in.
Sure.
You know, everyone's doing that, but I, I think, you know, we've got to try to figure out, like, come up with some ideas that bring our staff into play to make sure they're compliant, like if they want to reduce the number of tennis courts, and if our staff agrees they don't need the parking, they could do it. If their staff says they need it, no, they can't. You know, that type of stuff. We could put conditions in there to protect ourselves, in my opinion.
Well, first of all, Kevin, you're asking about the list of conditions as they are today.
Yes.
And I think Bob Kuntz indicated to, I think, at the start of the meeting, he will get that new list, which has the changes, the changes that were identified tonight by the resort. So maybe I'd ask the village manager, the village clerk will follow up on that. Then you'll have that list, and we can see, you know, what, what other things are not on it.
Aaron can get it and share it with everybody.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's, we all need to be working on the same page here.
Exactly, exactly. Are there, any other business? Please, go right ahead. Anybody have any other things to raise? We have comments from attendees. Are there members of the public who wish to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Would you please step to the microphone there and state your name and address, please?
Yeah, John, thanks. It's Steve Say. My address is now 5 McDonald Road East. Thank you. I was here a couple weeks ago, not, not real happy, maybe, at, and I want to thank Jeff and John for meeting me at the Streetscape Project, walking through how, how that's going to look, and maybe offering up some things that I think will make it better, and I would hope in the future, any significant stakeholder like myself would be earlier engagement in that. But thanks to Jeff and, and to you on that. Just a couple things, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a club member, I'm a resident, and I'm obviously a significant stakeholder here, so clearly that the Pinehurst Lodge is, you know, it's an important part, it'll be the biggest thing that'll happen to this area in probably 50, 60 years, right? And understanding that everybody in this room, everybody in this state, you know, we are paying for that lodge, right? I mean, let's, that's just the facts, right? We are paying for it. So what I'd like to see from you, and I think, look, you're all in a, in a challenging spot, the state obviously wants it to happen, and, and I think it will, right? But continuing to make sure that the Pinehurst Resort, who's going to benefit as a private entity from this, meets you halfway, not only on areas like the parking, which are essential, but, John, as I spoke to you about, and I spoke to Kevin as well, it's like, they kind of get caught up a little bit on the numbers, the numbers, the numbers. Well, we already have a traffic flow problem, right? And if, and if you haven't been at the traffic circle, the small one, at certain times of the day, then, right, I mean, it's pretty obvious. And we look at this unprecedented demand that's going to come from the USGA and from, from everything that's going on, I mean, it's great, but if we don't get a handle on the, the flow and how we're going to manage that, I don't care how many parking spots we have, those people have to leave, right? And, and, and while I appreciate the spot that Dick is in, and he's on the firing line, right? At the last meeting, I think there was some conversation about, well, it's, it's rarely full, right? And, you know, the club is rarely full. Well, you, you know when it was full? Yesterday, right? Yesterday. So while I, I, you know, look, I'm a fan of the resort, I'm a fan of this area, I want it to be successful, right? I have nothing against the resort and their success whatsoever, but those issues, you know, we need to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture. And another smaller issue, when the issue came up, well, the bar at the lodge, it's only going to be the people who's staying at the lodge. Well, guess who's going to be at that bar? Me, right? And I think there's a lot of other people that are going to be there. So the whole concept that, well, it's really only going to be for the people at the lodge, that's just not correct. So let's set that aside, and, look, let's talk and figure it out, right? But let's not come up with these fantasy notions, right? And the whole issue of trusting the resort, absolutely, right? And, and it's not in their best interest to not have the parking that they need, which I think the quote that Dick brought up, well, you all know, I'm very familiar with the Manor Inn and the brewery, right? Which somehow the Manor Inn, through, I guess, a grandfather clause, was allowed a 77-seat bar with adding 0.0 parking, right? That's, that's, that's interesting, and, and you probably know that they also were well aware prior to the completion of the brewery that they were short of parking there. And I know that because they came to me as the owner of the property across from the brewery, trying to get some relief. So, look, we all want this to work, right? And I know, again, you're working very hard, you're in a tough spot trying to manage that, but I think the resort has a history as a, as a privately-held, for-profit business, right, of maybe utilizing some of the public assets to their advantage, right? And, and that's just fact, it's not, you know, that's just the way that it is, and as this pressure comes in, people, vehicles, et cetera, I think jointly, you know, a, a public-private partnership hopefully can solve those issues, and clearly they want to get it started, and I totally understand that. I mean, look, I'd want to get, you know, I've done a lot of real estate deals, I haven't found one yet that wouldn't have been a lot more profitable if I didn't have to pay for it, right? So I understand why they want to get it done, right? So I would just encourage you to continue to work on those issues with maybe a focus on that traffic flow. It's not just about the parking, it's how does it all work? Because no one wants to be in a gridlock situation a, as we go about the town. So, anyway, those are some, some comments that, you know, obviously all my fans are here, but, you know, I, I, I would think that, you know, that's, that's more universally held, right, when it was brought up, well, who's complaining? Well, you know, look, no one's complaining in the sense that we all want it to work. It's great that the opens are going to be here, you know, I'm certainly going to profit from that, right? But, look, the resort has been advantaged, right? And if you can't see that, you know, I mean, Helen Keller can see that, right? I mean, it's just the facts, and they're an important part of this community, which is great, you know, it's just great to have them. I like their, you know, their golf, I like their bars, I think it's great, right? But as the, as a big citizen of this community, they need to make sure that they meet their obligations, and I, I, I think that's fair, right? It's not asking them anything special, right? Because they are going to profit from the public monies that have been made available to them, right? And that's the way that it is, I'm not, you know, I'm not arguing one way or the other, it's just the way that it is. So let's move forward, you know, in a, yeah, in a trust-but-verify mode is what I would ask of all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Say? Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? And if we received anything from public comments, that'll be circulated to the council members. Kelly, were there any tonight? No, no comments. All right, thank you very much. With that, I believe that concludes the regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, and we'll go immediately into the work session?
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Motion by Judy Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We've ended the regular meeting, and I'll open the work session.